Let us honor the memory of all those who sacrificed to give us this great gift of democracy by conducting ourselves in a professional and collegial manner. Emotional outbursts or accusations directed towards individuals or groups have no place here and they dishonor the memory of those who sacrificed to provide us this great gift of democracy. Before we proceed to the Articles of War and would you please join me in expressing our thanks to the score of elected and appointed volunteers who comprise our town government as well as the able employees who ensure the smooth running of our town? Tonight, I would like to especially remember Dover citizens who contributed to Dover's governance and who passed away since the last annual meeting. Albert T. Corleone, Margaret Peggy Clues, Francis Dapper Hagan, Priscilla Pitt Jones, Shirley McGill, Nicholas Milton Saris, and Carl E. Sheridan. We mourn the passing of these neighbors and are grateful for the difference they made to the life of this town. As I mentioned, democracy is a wonderful prize that has been preserved through the sacrifice and efforts of millions of our citizens. Let us take a moment to solidly recognize those who are putting themselves in harm's way at this very moment in service of our country. A moment of silence, please. Thank you and may God bless America. Before we begin, I would like to spend a moment now talking about the voting process. As was the case last year, Felicia Hoffman, our town clerk, has worked very hard returning technology to organize the distribution of response cards that you were issued as you entered the high school. When we have a vote, you will have 15 seconds to select 1A for yes and 2B for no. If your response cards do not work during a vote, we will ask that you please raise your hands and a tenant will assist you. We will now test these response cards by considering the following statement. Wasn't it a beautiful day today? If you agree, press 1 for yes when I give you the signal and press 2 for no if you disagree when I give you the signal. And although we usually will have a time limit of 15 seconds, we will not have a time limit now just to make sure that everybody's card is working. Should I ask them to vote now? Okay, you may vote 1 for yes, 2 for no. Now, after you vote, you'll see a green light flash in the right-hand corner and it's okay to vote more than once. Your vote will only be counted once and the last vote that you enter will be the vote that's actually registered. Does everybody have a green light flashing after they press the button? Does anybody have any problems? If you do have a problem, please raise your hand. Okay, it looks like everybody's okay. Does anybody else see anybody? Okay, so we're all set? Do you want to test how the votes are? All set Rebecca? All right, good. A few contrarians, very good. Before we begin tonight's proceeding, it is customary to recognize the chairman of the Warren Committee for a few remarks. Mrs. Canning.
Good evening. I would like to thank the members of the Warren Committee for their thoughtful and diligent efforts this year. It made my job a lot easier. They have committed many long hours to reviewing multiple documents and department budgets in preparation for tonight. I am grateful for everything they've done. I also would like to express my gratitude to members of town departments and committees and their representatives who have worked with the Warren Committee to prepare for tonight's meeting and to present this next year's budget. We have a long meeting in front of us, so I'm going to end my remarks there and introduce Erica Alders, who is going to present the operating budget for Article 4.
Thank you for coming. My name's Erica Alders. Oh, Tulav. And as Kate mentioned, on behalf of the Warren Committee, I'm going to give an overview of this year's operating budget. There are more details on the operating budget in the blue books that were sent to your homes a few weeks ago. So the overview's going to have a discussion on the operating budget, which is Article 4 tonight, and then a brief discussion on the Warren Committee's free cash recommendation. This slide shows the budget summary. The fiscal year 19 Article 4 operating budget is recommended at $37,464,644. This is up 1.6% from fiscal year 18. The total expenditures for FY 19 are $39,822,109 and this is up 2% from fiscal year 18. This slide shows the F19 total revenues. These are at $38,713,037. This is up from 2.7% from fiscal year 18. And the proposed use of free cash for fiscal year 19, which I'll discuss in depth a little bit later, is at $1,109,072. This is a decrease of 61.9% from last year's allocation of free cash. This slide just shows a few of the larger changes from the FY 18 expenditures that made up a good portion of the increase. You can see the schools are up 1.9%. Group health insurance is up 9.1%. Other insurance is 4.1%. Protection of persons and property, which is police and fire, is up 3.4%. Retirement's up 9.5% and the Conservation Committee Trail Maintenance request is up 20%. And a change in the town email services wasn't in fiscal year 18, so that's 100% increase. And the largest decrease is the solid waste disposal. This was largely related to the ban on commercial haulers that went into effect in January 2017, so you can see it's affecting the operating budget for fiscal year 19. There's some capital items that you'll hear more about, we'll have the discussion tonight. Article 5 is down 35.7% and special articles are up 149.3%. Some of the special articles and special articles other include replacement of the boilers at the Carroll Community Center, which is Article 11, hydrology study, which is Article 12, and a Conservation Commission fund supplement, which is Article 16. This shows a graphic description of the different components of the budget. You can see about 89% of the expenses fall under Article 4. The operating budget is the day-to-day budget of the town. Miscellaneous includes the special articles other, which I just discussed, and some state charges, additional overlay and recap appropriations. This chart shows spending by category. The total is about $37.5 million. You can see here that the schools are about 58% of Article 4, so that's the majority of the spending. The general government category is mostly townhouse functions and routine building maintenance. The debt and insurance and pensions are nondiscretionary spending. Protective services includes police, fire, ambulance, and emergency management. And the other category at 3.9 includes parks and rec, the COA, the cemetery, and the library. Revenue's a bit difficult to predict in advance, but this chart shows the estimated revenue with the tax levy at 82.4% of the revenues coming in. So in summary, we have the revenues depicted on the top and the expenditures at the bottom. There is a gap in the middle, which the Warren Committee is proposing to use free cash to balance the budget. So what is free cash? Free cash is a revenue source that results from the calculation as of July 1st of a community's remaining unrestricted funds from its operations of the previous fiscal year based on the balance sheet as of June 30th. This typically includes actual receipts in excess of revenue estimates and unspent amounts in department budget line items, which are called turnbacks, plus unexpected free cash from the previous year. So the free cash certified for July 1, 2017 was almost $8 million. You can see the change from the free cash of July 2016, which was $8.1 million, so it was down 2.8%. This year, the Warren Committee recommends the use of $1,109,072 of free cash to balance the budget. That was to fill the gap on that chart that you saw earlier. This will fund the difference between the estimated revenues and the budgeted expenses for FY 19 as detailed in the articles that will be presented tonight. After considered analysis, the Warren Committee also recommends that an additional $800,000 of free cash be used to lower the tax rate for fiscal year 19. So in total, the Warren Committee recommends $1,909,072 of free cash, but this would be subject to the amounts that will be allocated during the votes of the articles on this Last year at annual town meeting, the town voted to use an additional amount of $1.3 million of free cash beyond the minimum necessary to balance the budget for a total allocation of $2,913,013. And during the discussion of Article 26 tonight, the Warren Committee will present a more detailed explanation of its recommendation on free cash for fiscal year 19. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alders. At this time, it is customary to recognize the chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Ms. McCann.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and thank you for tonight. I would like to welcome you all to the annual town meeting where the monies and activities for the coming year will be discussed and approved by all of you. We've had a busy year researching and planning for this night on articles so varied as maintenance of the Carroll Community Center, water, and marijuana. On behalf of my colleagues on the board, Robin Hunter and John Jeffries, we want to thank all the volunteers who have worked on these issues with their respective boards and commissions, especially Kate Canning and Warren. I particularly want to thank Mr. Ramsey, Ms. Pugachev, and Ms. DeShillo for their painstaking work on the selectmen's business and on our all daily operations. Mrs. Felicia Hoffman has brought this night together with precision and care and she holds the center as town clerk. Chief McGowan and Chief Hughes and all the employees in town, thank you for each and every day of order and calm and for providing us with a town that truly shelters us all. And thank you, Bill Clark, for helping us with the presentations tonight. Lastly, it is an honor to wish our longtime town council attorney, Bill Leahy, all the best as he turns his responsibilities over to his colleague attorney Nina Pickering Cook. Bill, we thank you for having guided Dover through day-to-day issues since 2001. Nina. And Nina, you've been working with us for many, many years as well and we celebrate your continued help and support. And with that, let's get on with the important work of planning for the coming year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. McCann. Before we move to the Articles of War and it is customary to again recognize the chairman of the Warren Committee for a motion governing the conduct of the meeting. Mrs. Canning.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the following rule be adopted for the conduct of this meeting. Any amendment to a main motion that would increase in appropriation must contain a provision for the source of funds for the increase such that the total amount to be raised and appropriated at the meeting will not be increased.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Alders. Motion has been made and seconded. This is a majority vote, but before we start the voting process, does anybody have any questions or comments on this motion? Okay, none? No questions being seen or heard. You will have 15 seconds to press 1 for yes in favor of the motion or 2 for no if you're opposed to the motion on my signal. Motion carries. Okay, on to Article 1, which deals with annual reports. Mrs. Canning.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the reading of the various reports by the town clerk be waived and that the reports be accepted and placed on file.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mrs. Alders has a second. Again, this will be a voting process of pressing the clickers that you have, but before we move to the vote, which will be a majority vote, are there any questions or comments on this article or the motion that has been made? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask you to vote on my cue. Now, you may start to vote now. Motion carries. Article 2, Board of Assessors. Ms. Alders.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $35,000 for the reevaluation of all property in Dover to be conducted under the supervision of the Board of Assessors.
Thank you, Ms. Alders. Do I hear a second? Thank you, Mr. Seti. So a motion has been made to appropriate funds to the Board of Assessors. Are there any comments or questions on this motion? Okay, this is a majority vote. On my signal, please press 1 for yes, 2 for no. Motion carries. Article 3, Salaries for Elected Officials. Mrs. Baskin.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the salaries recommended for elected officials of the town, as shown in the right-hand column of the Warren Committee report, be called over by the moderator and that if no objection is raised to any of them, they be approved as read.
Thank you, Mrs. Baskin. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. The motion has been made and seconded that I read the salaries on page 31 of the Blue Book for Article 3. If this motion passes, I will read the salaries and put on hold those items that are objected to. We will then consider individually those items for which an objection has been voiced. All items that have not been ejected to will be deemed to have been approved. Any questions on the motion? Again, this motion asked me to read the salaries and if no objections are heard, the items are deemed to have been approved. Any questions or comments on this motion? Okay, in favor of the motion, press 1 for yes, 2 for no on my cue. You may vote now. Motion carries. I will now read the salaries on page 31 of the Blue Book. So if you turn to page 31 of the Blue Book, you can follow along with me. Article number 301, moderator, zero. As I said when you elected me seven years ago, you get what you pay for. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you very much. Is that right? Yeah, I'm sorry. Thank you, Bonnie. Okay. Elected position, Board of Selectmen, chairman, $200. Clerk, $150. Other member, $100. Assessors, chairman, $400. Other members each, $350. Town clerk, $61,434. Planning Board, chairman, $100. Other members, $50. Constable, three each, $150. Board of Health, chairman, $150. Other members, $100. I did not hear any holds. Did anybody else hear any? Okay, so the motion carries. The budget is approved. Now on to Article 4. This will be the same drill. Mrs. Canning.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the salaries and expenses recommended by the departments, officers, boards, and committees of the town, as shown in FY 2019 requested, column in the Warren Committee report, be called over by the moderator and if no objection is made, that the town appropriate such sums and raise such amounts from the tax levy and from other general revenues of the town, except that $10,400 of the amount be appropriated pursuant to line item 710 therein for maturing debt principal, shall be transferred from the Title V receipt reserved for appropriation account.
Thank you, Mrs. Canning. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Kender. So this is the same type motion that we had previously. It authorizes me to read from page 31 now, the line items for the budget, and if anybody has a question or an objection, they should say hold and we'll come back to that item to have separate consideration and a vote on that item. For the items for which no hold or questions are raised, they will be deemed to have been approved. So the motion I'm considering now is to allow me to read these and if there are no objections or questions, they're deemed to be approved. And again, it will be 1 for yes, 2 for no, and you may begin now. Okay, motion carries. I will now read the items on page 31 of the book. Moderator, number 301, zero. You thought I was kidding, right? Number 131, Warren Committee, $7,680. 122, Selectmen, total, $385,059. 192, Townhouse Expenses, $56,256. 191, Whiting Road, $4,734. 193, Carroll Community Center, $90,584. 199, Building Maintenance, total, $324,084. 129, Copy Postage, $30,140. 151, Law, $200,000. 135, Town Accountant, total, $226,018. 141, Assessor, total, $182,210. 145, Treasurer Collector, total, $221,656. 155, Data Processing, total, $169,795. 161, Town Clerk, total, $72,419. 162, Election Registration, total, $55,813. 175, Planning Board, total, $66,583. Number 411, Engineering, total, $112,554. Number 201, Police, total, $256,613. 299, Protective Agency Building, $79,523. 292, Animal Control, total, $30,154. Fire, total, $78,001. 231, Ambulance, $23,720. 241, Billion Inspector, total, $119,763. 291, Emergency Management, total, $1,116. 171, Conservation Commission, total, $101,843. 176, Board of Appeals, total, $4,122. 294, Kiara Trees, total, $112,309. 295, Tree Committee, $2,500. 433, Garbage Disposal, $19,848. 439, Solid Waste, total, $373,105. 450, Town Water, total, $28,808. 519, Board of Health, total, $88,592. Highway and Bridges, 422 Maintenance, total, $768,727. Number 423, Snow and Ice, total, $420,000. 424, Street Lighting, $12,489. 425, Town Garage, $71,102. 428, Tarvia Patching, $275,000. Number 194, Energy Coordinator, zero. 491 Cemetery, total, $117,715. 541, Council on Aging, total, $148,207. Number 610, Library, total, $656,204. 650, Parks and Recreation, total, $412,016. 152, Personnel Committee, zero. 178, Dover Housing Partnership, zero. 195, Town Report, $6,000. 543, Veterans, total, $2,000. 691, Historical Commission, $1,250,000. Number 692, Memorial Day- Number 692, Memorial Day, $3,000. Number 912, Workman's Compensation, $91,880. Number 914, Group Insurance, $2,564,683. 916, Medicare FICA, $186,881. 950, Other Insurance, $188,245. Pensions, 911. Norfolk County Retirement, $1,325,669. Schools, 600. Dover School Operating, $10,437,843. 601, Dover Share of the Regional Operating Assessment and Debt Assessment, total $12,042,917. Number 602, Minuteman Vocational, $96,218. 604, Norfolk County Agricultural High School, $6,000. Maturing Debt Principal, number 710, $1,378,400. Number 751, Maturing Debt Interest, $240,596. Number 759, Bank Charges, $4,000. I do not hear any holds. Does anybody have a question or a hold? Okay, the motion carries then as we voted in our preliminary motion. Okay, Article 5, The Capital Budget. Mr. Combe.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the following sums recommended for the various capital purposes be called over by the moderator, and if no objection is made, that the town raise and appropriate such sums unless another funding source is noted, and that any sums realized from the trade-in or auction of old equipment shall be used to reduce the cost of the acquisition of new equipment or to purchase related accessories.
Thank you, Mr. Combe. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Gurnon. Same drill as before. Motion has been made, and I read over the few items that are in the capital budget. And if there is no objection, they'll be deemed passed. If there is an objection or a question, we'll come back to those items separately. The items that we'll be voting on appear at pages 41 to 43 of your Blue Book. But before we start to read, let's now consider the motion that will allow me to read these. If you're in favor of the motion, press 1 for yes, press 2 for no on my cue. You may vote now. Okay, motion carries. Okay, so again, these items begin on page 41 of the Blue Book. There are only three items, pages 41 and 43. Number one is Fire and Ambulance, Fire Inspection Vehicle, $46,200. Number two is Police Department Patrol Vehicle, $36,500. Number three is Highway Department, Six-Wheel Dump Truck, $180,000. Are there any objections or holds? Okay, none being heard. Motion carries. Okay, all right. Onto Article 6, Unemployment Compensation Fund. Mrs. Gurnon.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $10,000 for the purpose of funding an unemployment compensation fund as authorized by Chapter 40, Section 5E of the Massachusetts General Laws.
Thank you, Mrs. Gurnon. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hamley. Is there any discussion on this motion? If so, please line up on the microphones, or if you're unable to line up, raise your hand. Okay, no discussion? This is a majority vote. And again, if you're in favor of the motion, press 1 for yes, press 2 for no, and you may vote now. Thank you, Rebecca. Okay, the motion carries. Article 7, Sick Leave. Mr. Hamley.
Article 7, pursuant to the town will vote to raise and appropriate by transfer from available funds or provide by any combination of these methods a sum of money to provide for the payment of accumulated sick leave to retired police officers as authorized by Chapter 375 of the Acts of 1984 or take any other actions relevant thereto.
Okay, and Mr. Hamley, I believe you are going to make a motion to dismiss this?
I am. I move that this motion be dismissed.
Thank you, Mr. Hamley. Do I hear a second? Thank you, Mr. Combe. So this is a motion to dismiss sick leave article. Again, if you're in favor of the motion, press 1 for yes. If you're opposed, press 2 for no, and you may vote now. Motion carries. Article 8, Recycling Committee Revolving Fund. Mr. Kender.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend Section 5-16 Finances of General Bylaws of the Town of Dover entitled Departmental Revolving Funds for the purpose of establishing a new revolving fund in Section 5-16E as shown in the document filed in the Office of the Town as follows. Inserting the following row in the table after Council on Aging, under Revolving Fund, Recycling Committee, under Department, Board, Committee, or Officer Authorized to Spend from the Fund, Recycling Committee, under fees, charges, or other receipts credited to funds, material sales proceeds, under program activity expenses payable from the fund, purchase of materials for sale, under restrictions, conditions on expenses payable from funds, not applicable for use in town pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half of the Massachusetts General Laws.
Thank you, Mr. Kender. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Canny. Is there any discussion on this motion? Okay, this is a majority vote. Do anybody? No, okay. This is a majority vote. If you're in favor of the motion, please press 1 for yes, 2 for no. You may vote now. Thank you. Motion carries. Article 9, Other Revolving Funds. Mr. Stewart.
Mr. Moderator, I move that pursuant to the provisions of Section 516 Finances of the general bylaws of the Town of Dover, the town authorize the use of revolving fund accounts for the following boards or departments, and that such accounts shall not exceed the amount set forth for the fiscal year 2019. Number 1, Building Department, A, Gas Inspector, $7,200. B, Plumbing Inspector, $17,500. C, Wiring Inspector, $29,500. Number 2, Board of Health, A, Perk and Deep Hole Inspection and Permitting, $40,000. B, Septic Inspection and Permitting, $50,000. C, Well Inspection and Permitting, $20,000. D, Swimming Pool Inspection and Permitting, $10,000. Number 3, Library, A, Materials Replacement, $5,000. Number 4, Council on Aging, A, Senior Activities and Transportation, $28,000. Number 5, Recycling Committee, A, Materials Sales Proceeds, $1,500. And further, that the fees charged for these services be credited to the respective accounts and that the aforementioned boards or departments be authorized to make expenditures from their respective accounts and for their respective purposes up to the amounts set forth above.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Do I hear a second? Thank you, Mrs. Baskin, for the second. Any comments on this motion? Or any questions? Okay, none. Let's move to a vote. Again, press 1 for yes for the... Oh, I'm sorry. It's hard to see with the light here. Hold it, please. Could you wait till a microphone is brought to you? Please rise and state your name and your address, please. Thank you.
Beth McGaw, 23 Valley Road, Dover.
Thank you.
The question is, when the numbers were read for Council on Aging, the amount was read as $28,000. In the Blue Book, it says $35,000.
Okay, anybody? It's $28,000. Does anybody have... Dave Ramsey? It should be 35, then. Okay. Okay, why don't we reread the motion with the correct number in it then? The entire motion, yes. So that there's no confusion. Thank you, Mrs. Stewart. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, I move that pursuant to provisions of Section 516 Finances of the general bylaws of the Town of Dover, the town authorize the use of revolving fund accounts for the following boards or departments, and that such amounts shall not exceed the amount set forth for the fiscal year 2019. Number 1, Building Department, A, Gas Inspector, $7,200. B, Plumbing Inspector, $17,500. C, Wiring Inspector, $29,500. Number 2, Board of Health, A, Perk and Deep Hole Inspection and Permitting, $40,000. B, Septic Inspection and Permitting, $50,000. C, Well Inspection and Permitting, $20,000. D, Swimming Pool Inspection and Permitting, $10,000. Number 3, Library, A, Materials Replacement, $5,000. Number 4, Council on Aging, A, Senior Activities and Transportation, $35,000. Number 5, Recycling Committee, A, Materials Sales Proceeds, $1,500. And further, that the fees charged for these services be credited to the respective accounts and that the aforementioned boards or departments be authorized to make expenditures from the respective accounts and for the respective purposes up to the amounts set forth above.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Do I hear a second? Thank you, Mrs. Baskin. Okay, again, any discussion? By the way, the lights are pretty intense on the stage here, so really wave your hand if you have a question and you want to make a statement so I'm sure I see you. Any questions or comments on this motion? Now, as it has been corrected? Okay, this is a majority vote. When I give you the signal, please vote yes. Rebecca, you may vote now. 1 for yes, 2 for no. Motion carries. Article 10, Highways. Mr. Ossetti.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into contracts, apply for, accept, expend, and borrow in anticipation of any funds allotted by the Commonwealth for the construction, reconstruction, and other improvements of town roads and related infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. Ossetti. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Alders. This is a majority vote. Are there any questions or comments on this article? Okay, it looks like nobody has a comment or a question. It's a majority vote. If you're in favor, press 1 for yes. If you're opposed, press 2 for no, and you may vote now. Motion carries. Article 11, Boilers.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town appropriate the sum of $600,000 by transfer from free cash for the purpose of paying costs of replacement of the boilers at the Carroll Community Center, including the cost of architectural and engineering services related thereto.
Thank you, Ms. Alders. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ossetti, for a second. I would now like to call on Candace McKinnon from the Board of Selectmen to make a presentation with respect to this article.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As Selectmen, we have a statutory responsibility to maintain our town buildings. The Carroll Community Center has undergone maintenance on a carefully planned schedule since 2002. This final project was planned to be completed as a single project in order to hold down the cost. There are four remaining maintenance items. Number 1, replace the 90-year-old boilers. By way of contrast, aside from the Carroll boilers, the oldest boilers in town date back to 1975 and are located at the Town Library. Number 2, the controls will improve ventilation and distribution of the heat. Number 3, ADA improvements will improve access for all users of all ages. And number 4, electrical updates and related hallway work are needed. It would be logical to package the boilers with the controls, but the expense of the controls automatically triggers the ADA requirements and thus nearly all of the expense of the $4 million project. In order to hold down the cost and still assure the building of heat, we opted to separate the boiler replacement from the rest of the project. Article 11 allows us to replace the 90-year-old boilers. Article 15, in a short while, will address the rest of the scheduled deferred maintenance. So in speaking of Article 11, the Selectmen unanimously support Article 11. Two separate engineered HB studies have called for immediate replacement of these 90-year-old boilers, the first study as far back as 2014. If both boilers were to fail at the same time and because replacement parts are no longer manufactured, we could find ourselves in the untenable position of needing to evacuate the Carroll Community Center, thereby halting all use of the building for our town departments and other activities. We urge you to pass Article 11 and instruct us to replace these 90-year-old boilers.
Thank you, Mrs. McKinnon. Are there any further questions or comments? Mrs. Weld.
29 Main Street. Thank you, Candace. And, Mr. Moderator and fellow citizens, I'm making the rest of this presentation in my role as Chairman of the Carroll Management Advisory Committee, which advises the Board of Selectmen on the management and operations of the Carroll Community Center and which includes members appointed by the Parks and Recreation Commission, the Council on Aging, the Board of Selectmen, as well as four at-large members. I'd like to start with just some quick facts for those who may not be familiar with the current uses and maintenance status at the Carroll. The Carroll Community Center is a town-owned asset that is the Selectmen's responsibility to maintain properly for its users. It has approximately 30,000 square feet of usable program space, has been home to Parks and Recreation since 2004, Council on Aging since 2013, and four license agreement tenants providing services needed or desired by Dover residents. It also provides much-needed space to several community groups and has room for future municipal office expansion. It has experienced a steady increase in the number of programs and participants it hosts, reaching a high of over 20,000 participants in 2017 alone. It has room for other possible uses that are compatible with the character and ethos of the town and its zoning regulations. And it needs to be maintained properly to realize its full potential as a community center. Following the roadmap provided by a deferred maintenance study done in 2003, the town has made a number of... the town has made a number of both major and minor improvements, with the minor ones being funded through a combination of operating and capital budgets, while the major ones have been funded through the special articles approved by voters at town meetings. The next one in the queue is a major one. Our boilers are almost 90 years old, as you heard. They have served us well, having lasted over two and a half times their projected lifespan. But they are breaking down with increasing frequency and becoming more costly to maintain and obtain replacement parts. We need a long-term, reliable, energy-efficient, and cost-saving heat source, not a temporary portable boiler. If this article is approved, new boilers will be in place in 2020. We've known since 2003 that boiler replacement would be needed. It has been on the Capital Budget Committee's out-year planning since 2013 and was highlighted as the next part of the facility's upgrade plan in 2015 when the bathroom renovation was presented. Continuing, it is important for citizens to know that a thoughtful, detailed planning process has preceded tonight's proposals. It has included a thorough evaluation of our boilers and HVAC systems by an experienced professional mechanical engineering firm and peer-reviewed, three years later, by another engineering firm as part of the feasibility study prepared by Mills Whitaker Architects. All of the professionals involved in the planning for this project know and understand the Carroll Community Center's infrastructure, which in most circles would be considered a desirable advantage, and certainly so in the world of old buildings. It is significant that since 2010, when the Second Building Committee finished its work, there have been no concerted demands for tearing down the Carroll and building a new, smaller, purpose-filled facility. Even after the recession ended, even as the Board of Selectmen approved each of the evaluation studies listed here in preparation for the last necessary infrastructure maintenance project at the Carroll, and even after the 2015 town meeting, when voters by strong majorities, including the Capital Budget Committee and the Warrant Committee, approved the bathroom renovations, knowing that boilers and HVAC were planned next, even following all these actions, there was no concerted demand for tear-down and build new. The suggestion in the Blue Book on page 50 has been put forward only in the last few months of this four-year planning process for the specific work being proposed tonight in Articles 11 and 15. The decisions about how many boilers we need and what type of fuel should power them will be made during the design phase of the project. That is, after the concept and the conceptual budget have been approved by the voters, which is what we are trying to do this evening. The fact that we haven't provided the desired answers to these particular questions at this stage of the process should not be a reason to vote against replacing the current boilers. And similarly regarding the green community grants, we will not make an application until after we have a project. Conceptual project cost for the boilers is $600,000. Please note that the hazardous materials allowance, which is bolded to emphasize that contrary to what you have read in the Blue Book, there is well over the $3,000 or $15,000 cited as being insufficient for asbestos remediation. The $35,000 allowance plus the final rounding of the total conceptual project cost ensures that there is more than enough to cover the knowns and the unknowns for the boilers. The overall project, as contained in both articles, has a $100,000 allowance for asbestos abatement. All allowances are conservative, so as to avoid unpleasant surprises. It is also important for the voters to understand why costs for municipal projects are significantly higher than those for commercial or private home projects. The state requires municipalities to pay at prevailing wage rates, which are always higher, and it has procurement regulations that add costs in both time and money. So in conclusion, the following committees, all by unanimous votes, urge your support for Article 11: the Board of Selectmen, the Carroll Management Advisory Committee, the Council on Aging, and the Parks and Recreation Commission. New boilers are absolutely critical to the very existence of the Carroll, to the mission of maintaining it properly for its many multi-generational users. We took a risk when we put bathrooms ahead of boilers in 2015, and now definitely boiler replacement cannot wait any longer. The need has been anticipated, reviewed, and updated over a period of many years. Whether we have five, 15, 50, or more years of life left at the Carroll building, new boilers are critical now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Weld. Are there any questions or comments? Please come down and queue up at the two microphones. Yes, Mr. Cox.
Bob Cox, 14 Cedar Hill Road. I'm representing this evening the Board of the Dover Council on Aging. The core services of the Dover Council consist of consulting to identify needs and provide support. The staff devotes its time to helping seniors cope with changing health conditions, assisting caregiver givers, locating resources, and facilitating the transition from hospital settings to home. Subsidized transportation is coordinated for seniors and disabled residents for various programs, medical appointments, and other destinations. The Council on Aging has allocated two rooms in the Carroll Community Center for office and meeting purposes. They utilize five additional rooms on a regular basis to provide a wide range of programs, services, and classes. Weekly or twice-weekly programs for health and fitness are offered as well as a lifetime learning educational series. Monthly luncheons and COA-coordinated trips provide opportunities for social interaction. Defined as 60 and over, age 60 and over, there are 1,461 seniors in Dover, or 23% of the residents. This number is only projected to increase. The demographic is a valuable resource as they pay taxes but do not necessarily utilize the schools. Contrast the school operating budget that we recently approved with the $148,000 operating budget for the Council on Aging. In the case of Articles 11 and 15, I believe the Warrant and Capital Budget Committees have gotten it wrong. There is no vision for alternative or better solutions. The studies done over the past years clearly show that the continued use and maintenance of the Carroll Community Center is the least-cost solution for the town's present and future space needs. The Dover Council on Aging has voted to support both Articles 11 and 15. We feel that the Carroll Community Center is our home. We would like it to be warm, comfortable, and accessible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Any other questions or comments? Sir.
Chris Bowlen, Tower Drive. I'm Chairman of the Park and Rec Commission, and I'm also a member of the Carroll Management Committee. The Park and Rec Commission voted in favor of Article 11 for the simple reason that it was explained to us by the Office of the Selectmen that the boilers needed to be replaced, that they're in a state of imminent potential failure, and we can't run programs in the winter if we don't have boilers. So for that very simple reason, we supported this article. We also believe it is consistent with past expenditures over the past 15 years, including the bathrooms. We've done things as they needed to be replaced. That's Article 11. Article 15, I'll address later when it comes up, but that's a different article. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions, comments? Okay, Way in the back. Can we bring a microphone up to her, please?
Kristen Dennison, 36 Springdale Avenue. This is a question that we may not be able to answer until Article 15. If this work was done now, to the best of our knowledge, there are no guarantees, would this be our last major expense for the Carroll Community Center for at least, I don't know, five, 10, 15 years? We've done the roof, we've done the bathrooms. Is there anything else on the horizon, other than Article 15?
Thank you, ma'am. Mrs. Weld, would you like to answer that question?
The answer is... Oh, up here. Sorry. Just speak to the light. The answer is no. There are no major infrastructure maintenance projects foreseen at the Carroll at this time. Period.
Thank you, Mrs. Weld. Way, Iron Shirt in the bag, sir.
This is on? Yes. Hi, Rob Andrews, 35 Miller Hill Road. So, obviously, I want seniors to have heat, and I take my kids to the play space there, for the parent talk play space. I want them to have heat, because right now, I know they... It's... I mean, my kids sometimes say it's too hot, sometimes it's too cold, so obviously, there's some issues. But what the Budget Committee and the Warrant Committee outline makes a lot of sense. We've only moved here five years ago. This piecemeal process seems odd to me, and it also, given our community, how wonderful it is, feel like we deserve better for a community center. So I wondered if maybe someone from the Capital Committee or the Warrant Committee might want to speak to their rationale, their thoughts of the future for a community center that might be new, or they're tearing it down, or... I don't know, the process, because it's confusing to me why we're where we are at. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Would somebody from the Warrant Committee or from the Capital Budget Committee like to comment? Mr. Springett? Name and address, sir.
Bob Springett, Chairman of the Capital Budget Committee, 28 Frances Street. The Capital Budget Committee and the Warrant Committee have spent a tremendous amount of time over this past three, four, five months looking at Article 15 and Article 11. From our perspective, when we first began to address this issue, we only had in front of us Article 15, a $4 million ask for the renovation of Carroll, covering the four items that Candace mentioned. As we looked at that article, we did a pretty comprehensive review of usage, of the financial situation, and options that we might consider for Carroll. At the end of the day, and at the end of the process, I mean, we also included looking at other communities, what they had done with Carroll, with the community center. At the end of the day, it was pretty clear to the committee that this was going to be a particularly large expenditure and something, once we decide, that the town was going to live with for many years going forward. And we thought that, since the last time the town voted on a comprehensive reuse proposal for Carroll was in 2002, that we thought it would be prudent if we took a step back and asked the town whether or not they wanted to fully renovate Carroll with all the appropriate costs, et cetera, or build a new facility to meet the town's needs. And I'll give you... I'll come back. And we thought it was important because there have been instances in the past where a relatively lightly-attended town meeting sort of makes a vote on an issue. And in one case, it creates... I'm going to come back. There was an issue going back. Park and Rec wanted to put in turf fields at Carroll Park. It was a controversial issue. Park and Rec, and I guess the Selectmen, decided to put that request on the ballot for the voters to decide. That vote came back. 80% of the town voted not to support turf fields at Carroll. Now, the nice thing about that was the Park and Recreation Commission, who could have gone forward, took the town's vote and stopped. And although, like in any vote, there is winners and losers, it was a clear message from the town what the preference was. Last year, I think, we had an initiative on the rail trail. Clear vote in favor of rail trails. I think it was something like 60% in favor. And that also had a fairly robust set of presentations, good attendance at town meeting, and I think most people, although not all people, were willing to accept that vote. So thinking about something like Carroll, where you're talking about a large expenditure for something that's going to last a long period of time, the committee thought that it made most sense to give the town the option, fully costed choice, so that, once the decision was made, we could all feel comfortable that the town had a voice and made the right decision for the town, whichever choice they made. The problem right now is that if we choose to approve either 11 and 15, it is de facto a decision to renovate Carroll, because the financial case would simply be overwhelming. So if you want to take that next step, if you want to preserve our options, perhaps build new, the Capital Budget Committee voted not to support either 11 or 15. On 11, there's been several pieces of information provided to the public, a couple of different views. We would point out, and I think when we did the study, there are two boilers in Carroll. They are old. They're not used simultaneously. One boiler is used to produce heat. The other boiler sits idle. If one boiler goes down, there's a redundant system to be used. As we were looking at options for Carroll, as we went through this, the other consideration was to have as a contingency...
30 seconds, sir.
Really? Already? Sorry. Was it a consideration to sort of use temporary boilers as redundant boilers while the boiler that failed could be repaired? So from our point of view, the best course was to stick with the boilers, provide proper maintenance, to buy the town the time to make a decision about whether to build a new facility or fully renovate Carroll, with all the facts on the table. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Springett. Sir and ma'am, you want to come up? And sir, if you want to... If you want to come down also, sir, that'd be great. Ma'am, could you state your name and address, please?
I'm Nancy Roberts, Two Bridle Path Circle. In 1996, I was on the Finance Committee on Roads at the time that the town brought to town meeting, a special town meeting, in October of 2016, the proposal to build a new highway garage. The highway garage was an old barn that was used, I believe, by Hodgson Homes and had been retrofitted and used as the town highway garage. Common sense, and anyone who had seen the building, knew that it was ready to fall down. But the forces of delay, which are very strong in Dover, hired an engineer to look at the building, a structural engineer, and he said that building was sound. Fast forward six months for the new people in town who don't know how Dover operates. On April 1st, the building fell down during a spring nor'easter. Fortunately, the only fatalities were the cars that were parked inside while our employees were out on the roads, keeping the road safe and passable for Dover. It's clear to me, in reading the Warrant Committee report, that it's very long and rambling and wants to look at 15 different alternatives, and let's bring natural gas, maybe, to the middle of town. Dover will surely support that expense. That the forces of delay are still alive and very well in Dover. I urge you to support this boiler. We don't want another 1996 failure. We want to keep the senior citizens, of which I'm now a group, viable. We want the uses... to keep the senior citizens, of which I'm now a group, viable. We want the uses of Carroll School to continue. If people want in the future to have a different building, maybe we'll have town offices there in the future and they will need another building. That can still be looked at. But we have to take care of today's needs today and not repeat 1996. Thank you.
Please refrain from applause. Thank you. Mr. Barrett, state your name and address, please, sir.
Bill Barrett, 35 Haven Street. Point of clarification, if we approve Article 11 and spend $600,000 on boilers, is that the correct number? Are those boilers then also available for the Article 12 reconstruction of the Carroll building? I'm a little confused.
Bill, do you, Bill, you mean Article 15 with the boiler, with the $600,000?
Right.
Okay, let me turn that over to Kate. Would you like to answer any question, Ms. Canny?
Article 11, which we're discussing right now, addresses strictly the boilers. Article 15 would be any improvements after the boilers, they would be the controls, ADA and whatnot. They've been separated. So the boilers, if the boilers are approved in this article, would be subject to use the controls that were being considered in Article 15.
They would be wrapped up or used by the Carroll School after renovation.
Yes, but the monies proposed in Article 15 are additional monies for other objects.
Bill, Ms. Canny, Ms. McCann also has a comment to your question. Ms. McCann?
Right. Thank you very much for the question. It's a very good one. The controls, which will push the heat around and even the heat out through the building, that's a part of Article 15. That's also then the other two components that we talked about will be discussed in Article 15. But the boilers will absolutely be used. That's what we're trying to do is to be sure at the very bare minimum, we get the boilers in the building. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Peterson? And anybody else would like to come down and talk or if you're unable? Okay, I'll get up to you after, Mr. Peterson. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Rodney Peterson, Springdale Avenue. I have a question which relates to the one raised by Kristin Dennison just a while back in terms of future costs on the buildings. I seem to remember last year there being a discussion about the necessity of $90,000, $900,000 maybe, for the cost of repairing the side entrance to the building. It had to do with foundational issues and the means of access to the building. Is that a true figure or are there other figures in the offing?
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Ms. McCann, would you like to answer that?
Thank you very much. That was $90,000 for the repairs to the side entrance that we're still concerned about. And I think that I would like to defer to our architect to speak to that. Would that be all right, Mr. Moderator? Would that be fine?
The tradition in Dover is that town employees and town agents are allowed to address town meeting. The architect is retained by the town, is therefore a town agent, and he does have permission based on our tradition, therefore, to address town meeting.
Thank you very much. Our architect, Don Mills. Thank you.
Don Mills, Mills Whitaker Architects. The $90,000 in question is incorporated in an accessibility study that was done. That exit from the current cafeteria is not an accessible exit, so as part of the accessibility upgrades, we recommended that it be removed. Prior to its incorporation in the study, it was separately cost and discussed and not accepted at that time. But it is within the cost of Article 15.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Peterson, any more questions? No? Anybody else? The gentleman in the back.
I have to apologize to my wife because she's on the Warrant Committee.
Fred, please state your name and address.
Fred Kernert, 17 Old Meadow. I happen to be an architect, so I actually understand replacing these large boilers. I also didn't realize that we had two boilers and they were redundant. Are they going to replace two boilers or only going to put in one boiler, which would be probably the common practice now? And I'm more worried also about the second question. Since it appears that the budget we're going to pass is a proposal, how are we going to guarantee that we do not trigger the ADA requirements because we find out that the 90-year-old pipes have gone through a term called tuberculated, which means the diameter of the inside is reduced, and we find out that we have to replace all of them, which will cost a great deal of money? Also, is it a steam system or is it a hot water system? There's a whole bunch of questions that, it's nice to know that there's a number of $600,000 or I think should be able to do the job. But it's sort of confusing as to what are we actually getting and how are we going to stop the ADA incident being automatically thrown into us from the state? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. McCann, would you like to direct the question to the architect? Sir?
Thank you for your question. I understand your concern. In 1931, when these boilers were installed, it was the second addition to the 1910 original school, the policy at the time was to have redundant boilers. So each boiler is capable of 4 million BTUs per hour of heat delivery to the building, which is why there are two of them. In the old days, you alternated between the two. Now, you could use a series of boilers instead, the cumulative total of which would be 4 million BTUs per hour. One engineer had offered three boilers as an idea, another offered two boilers as an idea. If we had a fourth and third engineer, we might say four. You can stage the boilers, you can alternate them in different ways for the swing seasons, you can modulate the amount of heat that's created. But in current philosophy of HVAC design engineering, you would never double the amount of capacity required. But you would also not want to put all the capacity required in one boiler, because you would not have a second one in the current technology. The $600,000 is well within the ADA trigger of $964,000 based on 30% of the full and fair cash value of the building. There is not a risk of escalation because we are not yet replacing the piping and distribution systems in the building under Article 11. It's only the work within the boiler room. And as you saw with the numbers, there's significant contingency within the boiler room. So there's not a risk of triggering ADA. Excuse me?
Mr. Kernert, could you wait till a microphone is brought to you, sir? Could we have another microphone brought back there? Thank you.
Have the pipes tuberculated?
There are condensates that have been replaced over time. There are condensate entrances that will be replaced when the Article 15 work is done.
So it's a steam system?
It was built as a steam system and converted to hot water.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so it's no longer steam.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Yes, sir.
Good evening. Andy Fallon from 58 Hartford Street. I'm also on the Dover Capital Budget Committee. The committee, and you've seen the vote that we took that is in the blue book, we took a lot of time, spent a lot of time listening to all the arguments for and against the two projects here, Article 11 and Article 15. I'll limit my comments to Article 11 at the moment. And that is, the answer to your question, sir, is that one boiler would be enough to provide a new boiler to provide heat. To spend $600,000 on two was a concern that was raised at the Dover Capital Budget Committee. We considered that and thought that that was excessive. There's no reason to replace two unless you really have a longer-term plan to keep it in place for a longer period of time. The other issue that I think Mr. Peterson raised, Rod Peterson, was that there was a side entrance. Two years ago, this was brought up to the Capital Budget Committee, and the idea was to turn a side entrance that was dilapidated and deteriorating into a window. But it was because of the degradation of that concrete and of that brick that that was required. But the price tag on it was $90,000 to turn a door into a window. If these items are voted on this year and you spend $600,000 on a boiler and you spend $3.4 million on the other items, you are going to hear year after year after year additional items that come up that are going to cost hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars to pay for. This is getting the camel's nose under the tent in terms of committing the money to this building. It is said in one of the publications or one of the flyers that I saw that I picked up as I came in, that this is the last item, or these are the last items that need to be done under the Forrest Whitaker Report. Forrest Whitaker, the Whitaker Report. That report was dated 2003. Those are the recommendations made in 2003. It's 2018. That's 15 years out of date. What the Capital Budget Committee had asked to be prepared, and really, I would ask the Board of Selectmen to take this issue on, what they asked, what we asked them to prepare was a current needs assessment for that building so that you know you're not buying a pig in a poth. Because there are things that you need to know about, that the voters in town need to know about, that are going to cost this town a lot of money every year at town meeting if they don't do a study of the condition, the assessment of the building. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fallon. Ms. McCann?
Mr. Fallon, I'd like to address that directly. We did have a study that was provided by Don Mills in June of 2017 that addressed indeed not only the current project, but any of the needs that were in the near future. And we've covered those and covered those. So I would absolutely again defer to Mr. Mills if he'd like to speak to it.
May I respond to that response to what I had?
Yes, Mr. Fallon, go ahead.
In the recent report and in several reports that we have seen, there are a number of items that, I mentioned before, hundreds of thousands of dollars. You will get requests in the future that are in the reports, including the Whitaker Report, to replace all of the windows, to replace the wood in the building, to make it look better. But to replace the windows, do you know the cost of that? It'll be hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars. You are going to hear one issue after another that needs to be done. There has not been a needs assessment study recently. And as the Capital Budget Committee, really, our vote came down to this. We are charged with determining the prudent use of taxpayer money, not to just keep spending it and spending it, but to use it in a useful way. Don't spend $600,000 on boilers when that money can be used for a more considered process. Don't spend $3.4 million on multiple items when the better process is for the Board of Selectmen to have a real study done of what the town needs and what it should do. Don't dump $4 million into this place and then tie your hands because you've already dumped, you've already committed that money. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Any questions? Comments? Could somebody bring a microphone to the lady in the fourth row from the back there?
Jean McDonald, Main Street. I wanted to hear what the Warrant Committee had to say since we usually rely on their opinions.
Okay, thank you. Anybody want to speak for the Warrant Committee? Mr. Hammerly?
First of all, let me just say this.
Fred, name and address, please, sorry. Name and address.
I'm sorry. Fred Hammerly, Partridge Hill Road. First of all, just let me say that we've made it clear in both committees, both Capital and Warrant, that we believe that the town should have an excellent, adequate community center for its citizens. There's no argument about that. The last speaker that you heard, I think articulated our issues very, very well. That being that we think, since there have been so many years, over a decade, since the town had the chance to look at other alternatives to continually update, remodel, renovate, repair the Carroll Center, that in fact, there's been a whole turnover in the residents of the town during that period. People have come, new people have come who have not had a chance to voice their opinion on this issue. You may or may not be aware that at least three towns surrounding us have seen fit to build new, Wellesley, Natick, and Medfield. In those cases, I believe, Medfield was 30,000 feet, but Wellesley was 15,000. Right now, I think the figure of 30,000 usable space was mentioned for Carroll. The building itself is 50,000 square feet. It's much too large for its intended purpose. It is being filled up only because it's there. There would not be some of the programs, and I'm not talking about Council of Aging now at all, I'm talking about the people that pay rent to the town in order to run pay-for programs. The only reason they're there is because there's space there. And our position has been to move forward cautiously. $600,000 is a lot of money. There are a lot of questions. The write-up in the blue book was somewhat rambling, but we wanted the voters to have all of our thinking at one time to be able to make an informed decision as to whether this is something that we really want to do now or take a more cautious approach, perhaps one boiler, new boiler to have as a backup. Again, given you've heard a couple of times now that the center only runs on one boiler at a time, the other one is redundant, it's highly unlikely that both boilers would fail simultaneously further. By approving the boiler, this Article 11 only, it does nothing, zero, for the distribution of heat around the building. There are cold spots and warm spots within that structure. But without new controls, new piping, new thermostats, all the things that go into a full-blown heating system, the only thing a boiler does is like a tea kettle. It heats water through a burner, in this case, oil, could be propane, and yes, it could be natural gas, but certainly could be propane. And we're urging the town to just think before you vote whether you feel a little bit longer, better, more informed assessment might be necessary and might be prudent before signing a check like that. I also agree that if both Articles were to pass, a total of $4 million, and Kathy, who I respect bravely, she is very much an advocate for the building, I understand completely, $4 million is not the end. It will never be the end. The building is old. It has laminated beams in it. There's glue issues with that. Windows were mentioned. Again, I'm rambling out a little bit here. We're just...
Ten seconds, Fred.
Yeah. We're simply urging caution. We love our seniors. I am one of them.
Do you want Don to add the last word?
It has nothing to do with that. We just feel that there are alternatives to be looked at, including a right-sized new building. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am? Name and address, please?
41 Claybrook Road. I have a quick question, I think. If we do spend $600,000 for the new boilers and if we rebuild, can we use, can we save those boilers?
Okay, Ms. McCann?
I'd like again to ask Mr. Mills if he'd like to respond to that.
Was the question if we buy new boilers and then tear down the building, would we reuse the boilers for the new building? You could always do that if you so chose. The boilers would be sized for this building. If you were to build a much smaller one, you probably would do different boilers for the new building. But you could salvage them if it made sense to do that. It's a little theoretical question, but it's best I can say about it.
Thank you, ma'am, and thank you, sir. Ma'am, name and address, please?
Hi, Candace Sullivan, 100 Pine Street. My family and I moved to Dover in 1995. It was soon after that that building was considered inadequate for a school. And that's when the new chickering came in and grades three through five, I believe, were added to chickering. We have been having this conversation since these children, since we closed the Carroll School and we moved the kids to chickering. The building at that time was considered unsafe as a school. We've been hodgepodgeing it back together with piece by piece by piece... We've been hodgepodgeing it back together, piece by piece by piece. I just think at this point, we really should not be spending money here and there, that we should be looking towards the future and a new building.
Thank you, ma'am. Sir, name and address, please.
James Heppelman, 18 Wallville Street. First of all, just based on that last comment, that story about the school kind of reminds me of the story about the other building that collapsed in the Northeastern. I'm not sure how to take that analogy, but the basic technical question I had, did I understand from the architect's comments about the ADA, that actually the entire building's worth about $3 million, full and fair value? Did I understand that right? Assessed value is 3 million. So 3.2. So the two proposals would be to spend 4 million to do modest repairs to an aging, ugly facility that's worth 3.2. Is that correct?
Thank you, sir. Any other questions or comments? Well, if somebody wants to make a motion to move the question, please raise your hand and be recognized. Gentlemen, could somebody bring a microphone to the gentleman in the middle here?
Do you have a microphone?
No, no, we need the microphone, sir. Thank you.
Craig Hunter, Cedar Hill Road, move to vote.
Okay, there's been a motion to move the question. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, the motion has been seconded. This is not a debatable issue, so we will move directly to a vote on the motion to move the question. If you are in favor of moving the question, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. One for yes, two for no, and you may vote. I'm dying up here. Okay, the motion to move the question has passed. We will now move directly to a vote on Article 11. If you're in favor of the expenditure for the boilers, you would press one for yes. If you're opposed, you would press two for no. And vote on my cue. Motion does not carry. Onto Article 12, water study. Mrs. Baskin? I would like to remind you, by the way, before Mrs. Baskin reads the motion, that there's always a possibility of a motion for reconsideration, so I would advise you to stay until the conclusion of town meeting, because as you know from prior town meetings, positions have changed. Mrs. Baskin?
Mr. Moderator, I move that town raise and appropriate the sum of $150,000 for the purpose of conducting a hydrology study, and all costs incidental and related thereto.
Thank you, Mrs. Baskin. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Carol Cherico, name and address, please.
Good evening. Do we have the power clip? Good evening. My name is Carol Cherico. I live at 38 Mills Street. I am... Do I have a way to move it forward? Okay, go. Go ahead. Next slide. I am one of six members of the Dover Water Resource Study Committee, and I'm up here with Ron Myrick, who is another member, and will be doing the second half of the presentation. Excellent. So the issue of groundwater availability in Dover has been raised over the years, but came to the head during the process to evaluate the purchase of 46 Springdale. At that time, concerns were raised that a dense development in that location may impact groundwater availability. And as a result, the Board of Selectmen, and subsequently the Board of Health, established the Dover Water Resource Study Committee. Since our first meeting, the committee has done a number of things. We've looked at existing data and public reports, and determined what data was needed to further inform ourselves. We've met with elected officials and state regulators, attended meetings at the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, and developed a proposal for a hydrology study, which will be presented later in this presentation. And at this time, the committee has three major goals: to collect data on Dover's groundwater resources, to obtain a professional analysis by commissioning a hydrology study, and to be a source of information on Dover's water quality and quantity, with the understanding that the availability of water is critical to property values and the ability to transfer real estate. Next slide. So why should we be concerned about Dover's groundwater? In the past several years, at least 10 residential wells have failed, and deeper wells are required to gain necessary water flows. We've seen evidence of perennial streams and seasonal wetlands drying up and disappearing. We've heard from many, many residents who are concerned that there is no water conservation measures in town unlike surrounding towns. And over the past several years, some of Dover's public water suppliers have exceeded their permitted withdrawals, sometimes by up to 100% during the summer months, and they do not impose conservation measures that are mandated in their DEP permits. Big picture, scientific data shows long-term temperature increases and shortening precipitation cycles impacts the ability of groundwater to be recharged. Next slide. So again, stepping back and looking at the big picture, 65% of Commonwealth households are serviced by the MWRA. We fall in the lowly 10% of communities that are served by private wells. And this is important, because as we'll talk about, the Department of Environmental Protection really doesn't have the resources or the manpower to focus on communities that are serviced by private wells. You can skip this slide, we'll go to the next one. Understanding Dover's groundwater. Dover straddles two river basins, the Charles River Basin and the Napansett River Basin. There are 28 different river basins in Massachusetts that have been identified by DEP. And groundwater aquifers or groundwater supplies closely correspond to these surface water delineations. So in Dover, every well, whether it's a deepwater well, a private well on residential property, or one of the public water supplier wells, is pulling from the same source of water. Next slide. In Dover, we've got 68.5% of our residents get water from private wells on their property, 28.7% get their water from Colonial Water Company, and then about 3% get their water from two smaller water trusts, and there are a few residents who get their water from public water supplies in Natick and Wallville. Regulation of public water suppliers. The largest public water supplier is Colonial Water Company, and frankly, regulation does not occur because DEP has limited budget and staffing, and they simply don't pay attention to the annual permits that are the annual reports that are filed by these water companies. So water conservation measures that are mandated in these permits are not enforced or even monitored for compliance. Withdrawals above permitted limits occur regularly and are not addressed by DEP. And the public water supplier customer base continues to expand without any review or analysis on the impacts of that expansion on abutters to those larger wells. So I'm going to conclude with the top five reasons we believe we should fund this hydrology study. First, there's anecdotal evidence of wells of impacts to our groundwater. Two, the availability of groundwater is critical to our ability to get water from wells, as well as to protect property values. Three, understanding our groundwater situation will allow town boards and commissions to better assess new development proposals. Four, without professional scientific data and analysis, we can't enlist DEP's enforcement authority to address excessive withdrawals from the public water suppliers. And finally, we want to be proactive in light of recently enacted regulations by the state, and anticipated regulations that will restrict water usage in the future. I'm going to turn this over to Ron Myrick. Ron is a Dover resident, a licensed site professional. He's also an environmental and civil engineer with the firm Tetra Tech. Sorry, environmental. Did I get that right? I got it right.
All right, sir, your name and address, please.
Ron Myrick, 11 Belden Road. So I'm going to go briefly through the scope that we've developed for this study.
Two minutes, sir.
Thank you. So we're going to generate a graphical information system map. And this map, there's actually one in the town already, it's just not populated with this information. So public water supply wells will be shown, private water supply wells, water distribution infrastructure, as well as surface water. So to accomplish this, or to accomplish the data gathering portion of this study, we plan to put 15 to 20 new groundwater monitoring wells across the town, different areas of town, get geographic coverage. And this will allow us to continually measure groundwater elevation and track changes over time, using this device. Tough to see. It's called a pressure transducer. It's suspended down in a well, and it measures the pressure of the water above it. As water goes down, lower pressure. Water goes up, higher, vice versa. Higher water, higher pressure. Lower water, lower pressure. You can then track over time what's happening to the groundwater elevation, every week, every hour, every month. Come back every year, or whenever you want, collect that data and track it, put it in an Excel spreadsheet and see what happens. The wells will also allow us to sample for environmental contamination at areas across the town. Next slide. So the scope of the benefits of the hydrology study will give us the infrastructure to evaluate more dense development areas, the geologically problematic well yield areas. So if you have an area that has tighter soils, it's harder to get water out of those soils. Also, areas where we have pumping wells, you have increased pumping, so you want to know what's happening in those areas, and also, as I said, environmental contamination. So this allows us to generate the data that can be used to inform future decision-making. Conservation-based regulatory reform, potential impact from new developments, as well as contingency planning. So if you know you have a problem in an area, you can plan for it, if you have the data. Next slide. Briefly through the costs. So a research and compile task at the very beginning, we do have some information, we should use that information. We have an estimated cost of $8,000 to $10,000. The GIS later, which is actually a piece of information, or a tool that can use across the town for other purposes, $29,000 to $33,000. Installing the wells, $25,500 to $33,000. Monitoring and testing groundwater, $37,000 to $45,000. Developing our report for the first year, with a grand total of $125,000 to $150,000 for the first year. But this is... Next slide, please. So the hydrology study, at the end of the first year, we have some information, but then we can continue to develop the database. So for $10,000 to $20,000 a year administered by the Board of Health, we can continue to track the information over time. We can see what happens over the years to groundwater elevations, and if we see problematic areas for contamination, we can see what's going on.
20 seconds.
So, and then we have annual reports, so I'll let you wrap it up real quick.
Wrap it up real quick. Last line, please. So approving funding for the hydrology study will protect Dover's groundwater supply, an irreplaceable resource that is critical to preserving property values. It will allow us to evaluate the impact to existing residents of new proposed developments that seek to draw water from our public water suppliers. We can request DEP to enforce existing water conservation measures that are in the permits. We can assess impacts of environmental contamination from hazardous substance releases in areas where groundwater monitoring wells exist. And finally, we can respond proactively to anticipated legislation that will force Massachusetts communities with private wells to address water conservation.
Thank you very much. Could you turn that light down, please? Thank you. Thanks. Seeing spots. Any questions or comments, please? Mr. Crowley, sir. Name and address, please.
Tom Crowley, 7th Cedar Hill Road, 50-year resident of Dover. I did attend one of the meetings that the Water Study Committee gave, and I had, I was quite disappointed with the information that was given. Couple of things, just number-wise. I don't see that Natick was mentioned above on the board. Natick serves 96 homes in Dover. I went over to Natick and asked them for the information, and they served the old network service in the Glen Ridge area, total of 96. So, including the numbers that are given on the board, we're getting close to 750, 780 people that are on regulated water systems. They're regulated by the Department of Public Utilities, and at the hearing, there was substantial criticism of the DPU in the way that they... DPU, not DEP. Anyway, we can argue about that later. They are regulated by the DPU, and an annual statement is by Colonial is sent to the DPU every year. And they showed this year, 620, I think customers, it went up about six in 2017. So what are we getting at here? What we're getting at is more regulation. If you, if you had, there are about 1,250, 1,200 people that have private wells. If you've got a private well, you better be careful about voting for this project, because your private wells are using most of the water in this town. The committee chose to attack the DPU when I thought that was useless. If you want to know where the water is in town, we know where it is. There's a TATA and Howard study that was done in 1998, and off Haven Street, abutting the park there, there's 51 acres controlled by the town. That is very close to the town municipal district, and the town could tap into that. What should be done is protect that site, test it for water. It has been pumped, tested in 1998, and produced 400 gallons per minute. So that's the site of future water for our town. All this stuff that is being shown up here is just going to result in more regulation. If you have a private well, we have no way of knowing how much water you're using. What will happen? The town will want to put, this committee of the town will want to put a meter on your well. It's Big Brother calling.
Tom, you're almost out of time.
We've heard this before. So vote against this. They've done a lot of work, but they're just heading in the wrong direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crowley. Can I have a microphone for Mr. Friar? Well, just a second. Mr. Friar had his name up, and then you can respond. So can I have a microphone come up front here? This gentleman has crutches, it's hard for him to stand. Jonathan, state your name and address, please.
Do you mind if I sit down?
No, by all means, please sit down.
Thank you. Mr. Moderator, thank you very much. My name is Jonathan Friar, Haven Street. I've lived in town my whole life, and I think most people here know that I've been involved in water, and all water issues in the town over the last 40 and 50 years. So I have a little background and a little knowledge about the water issues in town. And when I first heard that the town was going to be doing a water study, I was really excited, because anytime we're looking at water and things, it's a good thing, because we need to protect our water supply. However, when I went to the public meeting that Tom was at, I became very distressed, because it became obvious that Jerry had put forth a lot of information, which was misleading at best and just incorrect. Now I find that they've changed the information that they had presented to the Warrant Committee for the last two public hearings. for the last two public hearings, and was still on the website for the town up until five o'clock tonight. Now, the first one was, they had said that we had seventeen wells in town that went dry. That would be a shocking thing if that was true, but it's not true. When we questioned Mr. Clark at the meeting, he couldn't tell us where those wells were. We requested that information, and we still have not received that information. I contacted the Board of Health myself, having not heard from Mr. Clark, and they told me that, in fact, they don't have any wells that have gone dry in the last two years. They have a number of wells that have been abandoned, and they gave me a list. And the list includes Millah Hill Road, they relocated the well because of a new driveway, Pine Street, there was an unused well, so they abandoned that. Wilson Dale, they relocated the well for a new septic system. Strawberry Hill, they relocated the well. Pine Street, they relocated the well. These wells didn't go dry, they're relocated. This information is just incorrect. They've reduced the number from, the original number from seventeen down to ten, but they still haven't told us where they are.
Ten seconds, Jonathan.
Okay. Let me quickly just go on to, they also claim that we have several streams and wetlands in town that have disappeared. I again asked them to identify where those were. At the meeting, they couldn't do it. They did send me two items which they claimed were disappearing streams, which I say they're not. If they want to talk about them, I'm happy to discuss them. They also have said we have one monitoring well in town. When I asked them what that monitoring well indicated, it was clear they'd never even looked at the material in. It's been there for forty years registering the groundwater, and they hadn't even reviewed it. In fact, there's over eight or ten monitoring wells around Dover Center, and none of those have been looked at, the material hasn't been reviewed. And I think this article should be voted down, and they should be sent back to do more research.
Thank you, Mr. Fryer. Do you care to comment, Mr. Myrick?
First, I wish you'd join the committee because your knowledge would have been useful, since you've been here for a long time and have a lot of information about wells. You're proving a point that there's a lack of data. There's a lack of data about all these issues, but there is concern. There's people out here now who do probably have wells that have at least been problematic, and there's people that are concerned about water. And this vital resource that we have in this town, and we are in control of it, not MWRA, not the Quavon Reservoir, we're in a unique position that we control this water. And it's very valuable for not just our use, but also the fact that if we can, if people want to move to this town and they don't feel comfortable that the wells can supply them water, they might have second thoughts about it. This is information that we all devoted a lot of time to develop a work plan to provide to the town. We're all volunteers coming up with a way to solve a concern that I was approached about about a year ago, to say, hey, this is something you do for a living, will you help us? I've been in the town fifteen years, I said, I'll help out, I'll see what I can do to help out in this area. And that's what we're trying to do. So I'm not saying it's the perfect work plan, I'm pretty happy with it, and we'll continue to advance with this as our framework moving forward, and we'll take input. If you have input, we'd be happy to hear it.
Okay. Gentleman on the right here, sir. Name and address, please.
My name's Point Lyd, I live on fifty-five Pine Street. My family moved to this town in nineteen-fourteen. We've been fortunate to have the same land in all those years, a hundred years over. When I grew up, came in nineteen-forty-six, on our, on our place in Center Street, our well was forty feet deep. My grandfather lived on Pine Street, his well was just under forty feet deep. We now have my son who lives on the Center Street property, myself, I live on Pine Street property, different houses, but the same location. Sam's well on Center Street is seven-hundred-and-fifty feet deep. It had to be hydrofracked to get the allowable flow for a four-bedroom house. My well is nine-hundred-and-twenty-five feet deep. It was hydrofracked, supervised by Jonathan's brother, Joe, about twenty-five years ago. And so when you say the water level is, is not as high or is plenty of water, I've got personal experience says that it isn't. And on the north side of Snow Hill, where our land lies, there are a number of, there's two or three streams that flow off. One flows out of Hales Pond, between Walpole and Pine Street. It crosses at the intersection of Santa and Pine, down through Noelwood, goes under the railroad bridge, and it goes into that large spring, Forty-Six Springdale that we talked about two or three years ago. It was always a perennial stream. Now it's suddenly an intermittent stream. I wonder why. It's not because of climate change, it's there's dozens and dozens of new houses there. And the other brook runs down through our property closer to Center Street, it crosses Center Street opposite Libby Arnold's and Jerry Arnold's place, there's a fire hole there, and it runs eventually into Trout Brook and Spring Brook. Both of those streams had lots of trout in them when I was a boy. I'd walk over there and fish. One year, nineteen-fifty-five, I caught over a hundred trout. In those days, it was a smaller town. But I'm saying we need to study water in this town. And I've lived here just as long as the other guys have, and our families have too. And we, we're not, this is not adversarial, we just need the data so that we'll know what, where we're going. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Lady on my left, please refrain from applause. Name and address, please, ma'am.
Janet Bowser, Seventeen Sterling Drive. I'm an environmental attorney, and I've worked for over thirty years protecting our environment here in Massachusetts. And it's my pleasure to be serving on the Conservation Commission right now. The commission has voted in favor of Article Twelve after hearing the study committee's presentation and a discussion. The Conservation Commission has seen an increase in perennial streams and seasonal wetlands turning from perennial to intermittent. What that means in terms of our authority to regulate is that a perennial stream provides a two-hundred-foot buffer by which we can review a project and put conditions on it that protect the environment. When a stream becomes intermittent, we can, we only have a hundred feet to protect that stream and all other wetland resources. Passing Article Twelve will help provide the commission and other town boards more information and data that we need to better regulate and protect our environment. As a former employee of the Mass DEP, I know firsthand the lack of adequate funding and staffing which leads to a lack of proper enforcement of regulating public water suppliers, especially in small towns like Dover. Our groundwater is one of our most critical resources. We need more data to protect it because no one else is going to do that. The state is not enforcing their regulations, and we need adequate data and review to further assess the situation. We are not, there's no proposal here for regulations, it's simply needing more information in order to protect our water resources. I encourage town meeting to support Article Twelve.
Thank you, ma'am. Right here, yes, ma'am. Name and address, please.
Tara Nolan, Cranberry Lane. I'm on the Open Space Committee and Planning Board, I'm speaking on behalf of the Board, Planning Board, which voted unanimously to support this article. Our charge is sort of twofold, it's to manage both development as well as the master plan for the town, and in both of those capacities, the Planning Board is keenly aware of the impact and the importance of water resources and water purity for the town. Virtually every single resident, apparently with a less than one percent exception, in Dover relies on wells that are in Dover regardless of your delivery system, whether it's a private well or a public water supply, your water's drawn from this town. And as we consider as a board the future development, it's really critical for us to understand the ability for increased density in certain locations and understand whether that's sustainable for the new buildings, as well as how that may affect abutters and other people in the area. And even without development, I think it's important to understand how this shared resource is performing. We hear anecdotal stories of changes in water supply, we're all here, we're all in this together, and I'm assuming we would all like to have running water in our homes, and we need to know how to improve that situation and/or how to evaluate any alternatives. I think if we have to make a change, if we find out that water supply is limited, we've, anyone who's been here for a long time understands it's a complicated, heated, and very expensive process to look at what the alternative supplies would be. Allen Bank is an option that's frequently discussed, it's expensive, it takes a lot of planning, and it's something that should only be done thoughtfully and with good data behind that decision. So I would support us having strong local data that we've collected, we can't really wait for it to be crisis time, we need data, and we need years of data in order for it to be meaningful. We can't wait until we're in a troubled spot and then get a couple of years of data and try to make a thoughtful, long-term decision on that basis. It's apparent, whether it's good or bad, the DEP is not undertaking the steps necessary to protect this town on that issue. I'm a big believer that knowledge is power.
Thirty seconds.
So I would support the Planning Board. The Planning Board supports this article, and I hope you'll all vote yes on Article Twelve.
Thank you. Lady on my left.
Hi, Valerie Lyd, Fourteen Haven Terrace. We've heard a lot about the quantity of water, but I'm actually interested in the quality of the water. I'm concerned about the increased traffic that's been coming through Dover and the risks of any spills through accidents, especially on Center Street with the development that not only happens within Dover, but the trucks that are going through Dover getting to Newton and Needham and the surrounding towns who are also busy in construction. Whether those are trucks that are landscaping trucks with fertilizer, whether they're oil or gas trucks, whether they are just loads of fill that we don't know where they're coming from. And I, a recent statistic that we looked at, in twenty-fourteen, there were about eighty-seven accidents in the Dover area, and in twenty-seventeen, just three years later, there were one-hundred-and-thirty-two. So I just worry if this trend continues and any risks that we have to the quality of the water. I'm hoping that this study will be able to help identify how these aquifers flow and maybe could identify if there is a spill somewhere on Center Street or any other street in Dover, would be able to help the households in Dover understand if they're at risk. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Crowley?
Mr. Moderator, one thing I wanted to mention to you that occurred after the meeting I went to, we were talking about who owns the water on your property, and I mentioned to the, one of the previous speakers that I own the water on my property. She was in shock that I would say that, couldn't believe it. Well, the truth is, in Massachusetts, common law is how you discover who owns the water on your property. You own the water, there is no state statute or anything like that. So if you're going to vote for all this new regulation, you ought to know it ahead of time. If somebody, somebody is going to tell you, you're using too much water even though you have a private well, because we've now discovered that, or we've got a system to measure what everybody is using in town. How they're going to do that without a meter, I just don't understand, but that's what they're suggesting with this regulation. Vote no on this thing.
Thank you, sir.
I'd like to move the question, Mr. Moderator.
Tom, I'm sorry, having given a talk, you can't move the question.
Say that again.
Having, having made comments, you're not allowed to then move the question.
Really? Well, maybe we could ask somebody else to do that.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Crowley. The lady who's been patiently waiting here, ma'am.
Thank you, Charlotte Wood Harrington, Two Forest Street. I'd like to say that I wasn't able to be here, I'm a brand-new resident of Dover, and since I've moved to Dover, my well has gone dry. It was one incident, and it was a little bit frightening to suddenly not have water in your house. It turned out that it eventually came back without any intervention, but it was after we had to call in the well person to come again and check out, make sure everything was okay. I am a hundred percent for this study for the simple reason is, I've only, I haven't even been here a year, and my water has been affected. So it doesn't make me feel very comfortable. The water that I, I own the water all the way down to the center of the earth, I own my little piece of property, but that water keeps moving underneath. All of our water is connected. We don't have any rights to stop it, to stay just on my property. If it did, I'd put a fence all the way down into the aquifer. But we're all in this together, we do, do need the information. I don't see how it could be monitored in, for a specific household. I don't think we have that technology yet. But I do think that this is all of our shared resource, and we as a community need to understand it and understand the flow for it. So I am one hundred percent behind it, and as somebody who's already had this scary experience, nobody wants to be in this boat. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I see, I see a hand over here in the third row. Wait till the microphone comes, sir. Do we have a microphone down here? Right here, raise your hand, sir. Right down here. Yeah, stand up, there you go.
I've been waiting for a long time.
Where, I'm sorry, who?
I am. Been waiting for a long time. Can't see him.
Okay, I'm sorry, sir, let me get the person in the back here, with the lights, it's hard to see, and then I'll come back to you. Gentlemen in the back? There's only one microphone? Maybe we can start to use tin cans and strings.
Kevin Ban, Seventh Pleasant Street, I'd like to move the question.
A good sense of comic relief. All right, thank you, sir. The question has been moved, do I hear a second?
Yes.
Okay. Motions to move the question are not debatable. It will be a majority vote on the motion to move the question. When I give you this signal, if you're in favor, vote one for yes or two for no, you Okay, the motion to move the question passes, so we'll go, move directly now to the motion, which was asking for a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for the purpose of conducting a hydrology study. Again, if you're in favor of the motion, if you're in favor of the hydrology study, you will press one for yes. If you're opposed, you'll press two for no, and you may vote now. Okay, the motion carries. Article Thirteen, Historical Commission. Mrs. Canny.
Mr. Moderator, I move that this article be dismissed.
Thank you, Mrs. Canny, do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Kender. Motion has been made to dismiss Article Thirteen. Any discussion? Okay, we'll move directly to a vote. If you're in favor of dismissing the motion, please press one for yes. If you're opposed, please press two for no. You may vote now. Motion to dismiss passes. Article 14, Mr. Cohn.
Mr. Moderator, I move that this article be dismissed.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, motion has been made to dismiss Article 14. It has been seconded. Any discussion on this article? Okay, we'll move directly to a vote. No discussion. If you're in favor of dismissing, please press 1 for yes. Opposed, 2 for no. Okay, the motion passes. Article 15, Carroll Community Center. Now, does Mrs. Gurnard have the answer? Okay, Mrs. Gurnard?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town appropriate $4 million for improvements to the facilities at the Carroll Community Center, including the cost of architectural and engineering services for plans and specifications related thereto, and for the payment of all other costs incidental and related thereto. That to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectment, is authorized to borrow said sum under Chapter 44, Section 7, parentheses 1, and parentheses of the Massachusetts General Laws or any other enabling authority. That the Board of Selectment is authorized to contract for and expend any federal or state aid available for this -- for the project, and that the Board of Selectment is authorized to take any other action necessary or convenient to carry out this project provided. However, that this vote shall not take effect until the town votes to exempt from the limitation on total taxes imposed by Chapter 59, Section 21(c) of the Massachusetts General Laws, parentheses, Proposition 2 1/2, and per n, amounts required to pay the principal of and interest on the borrowing authorized by this vote as set forth on the ballot for the May 21, 2018 election. And further, that any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the Massachusetts General Laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount.
Thank you, Mrs. Gurnard. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hamley. Motion has been made and seconded. I will now turn to Kathy Weld. Kathy, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Kathy Weld, 29 Main Street. So we now have the boilers included in this $4 million project, back where they belong with the rest. So we want to continue the process that we actually began in 2003 and continued big time in 2007, '08, '09, and '11 with the stabilization and preservation, sealing the building envelope, making some major improvements that actually make it a building that is not in any way, shape, or form near to falling down. So boilers are back in. They are critical, as we said before. But now we have the heat distribution systems and the temperature controls that should accompany those new boilers, thus bringing the two back together, yes. The current system components date back to 1971, the HVAC system. They're antiquated and well beyond their useful life, with several units and controls no longer working. They should be replaced with new systems that will distribute the heat provided by the boilers in an energy and cost-efficient manner, and new temperature controls that will provide appropriate temperature in each space. It is recommended by the mechanical engineers and the architectural consultant to do this work concurrently, boilers and HVAC together, for significant cost savings as well as for compatibility and having such interrelated systems be of the same generation. In light of the school's experience regarding air conditioning, several citizens asked us to reconsider our plan to not include central air conditioning in this project proposal. We have done so and have concluded that central air conditioning would cool spaces that don't need it, especially the large common spaces that are not used much during the summer months, the cafeteria, the gym, and the Carroll Room. Instead, we will continue to install many split AC ventilation units to cool specific places where there is use, need, and demand, as in the COA office and activity rooms already, and scheduled for Parks and Recreation Office Meeting and Activity Space in 2023. This course of action has served well. It works for the users, and the cost can be reasonably handled within the Article 5 capital budget. The license agreement tenants who have so desired it was stalled AC at their own expense. Next, please. The accessibility improvements include the installation of a small elevator at the rear entrance, which is the most used, to service all levels, construction of a ramped approach at the back entrance, and regrading of the walkway at the front entrance, and making all doors, doorways, exit sinks, counters, fire alarms, exit signs fully ADA compliant. This ADA accessibility improvements must be a part of this project primarily because of the cost of the HV work. If we had done the boilers by themselves, we would have still had to do the ADA compliance because the cost of the HV at more than 1/3 of the assessed value of the building triggers the requirement for full ADA compliance throughout the building. And we have known that this would be the case ever since 2003, when riding under the radar, and that it will always be the case, no matter when we choose to do HV work. We also believe it is high time such improvements were made. Together with the boilers, these two components, the -- excuse me, I should say, the three boil -- the boilers, the ADA and the HVAC together represent the bulk of the total project cost. So the next components here, too, we have elements of essential maintenance, such as replacing the old 1971 fire alarm system and emergency generator. They are combined with needed improvements that will be as visually attractive as they are useful, namely upgrading the 1971 lighting and installing new acoustical ceiling tiles and new flooring and hallways and stairways. These latter items make great sense to do with the rest of this particular project because ceilings and floors would have to be opened anyway for the piping and wiring work in the other project elements. The cost of this portion of the project is 3.4. Now, obviously, I need to reset. The total project now with boilers in it is $4 million, contrary to the slide that had been prepared ahead of time. This slide illustrates the benefits of performing the work as a single integrated project rather than incrementally in phases. The increased cost of the phased approach is due in large part to the escalation costs estimated at 4% per year. The duplication of oversight and procurement services and fees for each separate project also results in significantly increased costs overall. The phasing study was done by architect Don Mills upon request in January of 2018 and not as part of the study he authored and presented in June 2017, contrary to what the Warrant Committee opinion seems to imply on page 48 of the Blue Book. The tax impact of Article 15, now with the boilers, $4 million borrowing, we believe is both reasonable and affordable at $141.91 on the median home tax bill in the highest year and declining each year thereafter to the end of the bond. You may just disregard those figures. The next slide gives us some cost comparisons showing the cost of our total proposed project with the boilers compared against some new build costs. First, you see the major deferred maintenance on the existing building with its gross square footage of 41,000 square feet, not 50,000 square feet, and that at a cost of $4 million. Second, the 2006 design for Build New to a program based on citizen demand following an Sense of Town survey. Among other things, it called for a full-size gym, a great room, no CDC, several class -- three classroom spaces, a dance studio, and of course cafeteria, and so forth. All the elements that citizens at that time considered essential for a community center. It also included unfinished basement space for municipal expansion, storage, and future possibilities. Its price tag was 18.5 million in the $2,008, an estimate that has been refreshed, as you see here now, at $25.6 million if construction were to start in 2020. And the last comparative figure, which is purely conceptual for discussion purposes only, is for a smaller, purpose-built community center. At half the gross square footage of the 2006 design, which is -- was 50,000, this option would need to eliminate some of the program elements identified in three previous studies as being essential for the community center, as well as to accommodate future space needs. So $4 million for maintenance versus 16.6 for Build New smaller. In conclusion, there are many good reasons to support this project. First and foremost, its components are essential to the efficient, reliable functioning of the Carroll Community Center. They finally complete the deferred maintenance we began addressing in 2003 and bring the Carroll up to the standard of other town buildings. Doing it as a single integrated project saves significant money, $1.5 million in the long run, and is strongly recommended by professionals and the boards that actually represent the users. I would like to emphasize that this project does not preclude future improvement initiatives that citizens may wish to explore, although due to its foundational nature, it should precede them. This project allows us to make better use of the asset that we already have, and your support would affirm that there are many more years of useful, vibrant life in the Carroll if we care to maintain it. I ask you to join the Board of Selectmen, the Carroll Management Advisory Committee, and the Council on Aging in Supporting Article 15. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Weld. Any questions or comments? Mr. Clark?
Gerald Clark, Valley Road. Sir, without any comment whatsoever on the content of the article, nor any imputation as to my interest in the article, a point of information to you, sir. Is it not necessary that this article be amended first to include the boilers?
No, it's not, Mr. Clark, because the article was broad enough to support the main motion as it was stated.
At the $4 million?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
We already had Town Council pass on this, sir. Thank you for your question, though. Any other questions or comments? Kathy? Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Kathy Gilbody, 8 Raleigh Road. So I'm really confused. I'm sorry. So we just voted down the boilers. So just help me understand. We're now being asked to consider the boilers again with the remaining items. Is that correct?
Let me turn the question over to Mrs. Weld.
That is correct, and I think that maybe it wasn't clear enough in Article 11 that the boilers are critical. They are the most critical part, and this was originally a single project. It should be done together. It is the last of a job that we are trying to finish. We've had, if you average out what we have been spending on the Carroll, it's a little over $100,000 a year for the last 17 years of keeping that building going and having increased usage in the building, and two town departments and the possibility of future municipal expansion needed. We've already been through the study and studies of building new, getting new designs. The reason for showing the cost considerations with this was to see the comparison. We believe that we have our offering to the voters, the least expensive and most reasonable option for continuing to use that building. If we stop and halt, as some would like to do, we run the risk, well, just a number of years. But if we turn -- if the boilers do fail, and actually, I need to speak to that point in the previous article because the Warrant Committee and the Capital Budget Committee have continually asked us to plan for the future, and yet they are the ones telling us, wait till they fail and then do something about it. That is a very expensive option. They have been failing. We still have one down from this last winter. Both of them failed this winter, but not simultaneously. This is not a good situation, and we need to take care of it. So that is why we're giving one more try for the boilers. And the other things the Warrant Committee also gave, the fact that the controls did not go with the boilers, that was one reason why they voted against it. So now we've got them back together. We need to do the accessibility. We should do the other things. And all the people that would like to be able to use that building and enjoy that building, we are providing the infrastructure and some of the good looks, and there's nothing to preclude you from doing further things. That is a more extended answer. I hope it got at least part of it for you, Kathy.
Thank you, Mrs. Weld. Ms. Akins? Bonnie, he can bring your microphone right behind you if you like.
Bonnie Akins, Greystone Road. I am still a little concerned about the funding. Was there a dollar amount in Brooks's motion?
Yes, there was. And Mrs. Gurnard, could you state the dollar amount again?
$4 million.
Okay, thank you. So it is up to $4 million that could be borrowed. Okay, I -- thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Akins. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Fleming? Sir, could you bring the microphone down to Mr. Fleming, please? Sir, state your name and address for the record. Thank you, sir.
Jim Fleming, Fox Run Road. The boilers have been rejected. Dover has spoken. How can we fairly propose to revote on that, to pull in another $3 million? I think we're running the risk of confusing the audience on an issue that's to be rejected and sneaking this in for work that is not critical. We're saying the boilers are critical. They've been rejected. Now we're bringing in all of these other items, which are appearance, et cetera, et cetera. I think you should consult your attorney there. Is this legit? A legit vote?
Yeah, Mr. Fleming, thank you for your comments, and sir, we already have consulted counsel, and it is within the law and the scope of the article. We had similar questions, and it is perfectly permissible in light of the language that was in the article, sir.
Could he tell us?
Absolutely. Mr. Leahy?
The language of Article 15 is very broad, and so it's a scope determination of whether the boilers are part of the improvements, and the moderator has broad discretion on determining what is within a scope of an article. This article talks about Article 15, about improvements, and then it also has language that many of our articles have that just emphasize how broad it is or take any other action relative thereto. So again, it's the moderator's determination. The moderator has broad discretion, and this article gives him broad discretion to include the boilers in addition to the other improvements. That's -- I don't think it's a close call.
Right. It wasn't even close, Mr. Fleming. The question is whether the article provides notice of what might be considered a town meeting, and we actually discussed this at the moderator's meeting. meeting, and we actually discussed this at the moderators' meeting. It's been discussed with the Warrant Committee, the Selectmen, and obviously, as a moderator, I can't say whether I agree or disagree with it, but it was clearly within the scope of the article. Yes, sir?
Wouldn't it be more reasonable that the proponents here withdraw this article and come back with a clean article?
Sir, they chose not to do that. Thank you, Mr. Fleming. Any other questions or comments? Their left side, it's right down here, coming down. Thank you, sir.
Matthew Schmidt, 27 Pine Street. I think we need to, before we do a rather momentous vote here, put things in perspective a bit. This issue, as you know, has been going for, since 2002, and this evening, we're the ones out in the audience that have to make the decision, because we've got the Warrant and Capital Budget Committee versus the Selectmen. And having been on a Warrant Committee for six years, I know there's a lot of hard work that goes into it, and I'm not denying the many hours and the deliberations that Capital Budget and Warrant have done, and it's all for, of course, our benefit. Bear in mind, however, that our elected officials, the Selectmen, are unanimously in favor of going through with these infrastructure improvements. These are the improvements that will allow us to realize a vision, to have a community center for the town of Dover, which is being used in increasing numbers, exponentially increasing numbers, 20,000 last year alone, all generations. The examples that they cite in Medfield and in Wellesley are senior centers for a quarter of the population. They're beautiful. I've been to both. Would love to have a senior center. This issue's been going since 2002. Five studies, again, a lot more volunteers and experts coming up with presentations, and we're still deliberating. So how are we going to magically come up with a, are we going to, nobody's stepped forward. They could. I'm sure there are some residents who could afford to write a check for at least the seed money, but nobody's come forth. So here we are, being pie in the sky. If you look at the town report, you'll notice that both in under warrant and capital, there's no mention of the Carroll Management Advisory Committee, whose sole purpose is to advise the Selectmen on the operations and management, maintenance of the Carroll building. It's kind of like saying, well, we're going to decide on a school issue, warrant and capital budget, but we're not going to consult the school committee, or the administration, or maybe even the Parent Teachers Association. We're going to decide on our own. And that's why you get all sorts of innuendo and distortion.
Thirty seconds, sir.
Which has come out this evening. The English have a wonderful word for what's been happening for these many years. It's called faffing around, and I think it's quite appropriate this evening, because that's what's been happening. And are we going to keep faffing around? Do you realize that 324 Dover residents have died since 2002? Are we going to have another 100 or so die before we decide what to do? And then, either way, we're still going to have to foot the bill. This building, if you haven't been in it, I urge you to go. It is vibrant, and it is growing, and it's all generations of Dover.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Springett, name and address for the record, please.
Bob Springett, 28 Francis Street. I just have a couple of points I'd like to clarify. We looked at Wellesley, and it is a fantastic facility. I think it's just a little over 13,000 square feet senior center. I think the cost was somewhere around $10 million. The interesting part is that the senior population in Wellesley is 6,000 people. Our total population in Dover is 6,000 people. So when we were looking at sizing the community center for a new facility, we chose a number of about 15,000 square feet, based on other towns' use, et cetera. That number at sort of the Mills quoted rate comes in at under $10 million. I think he quoted 650 per square foot. So we're really talking about, and I think if you look at the papers that were handed out beforehand, the, we think a new facility could be purpose-built for the order of magnitude, about $10 to $12 million. And I'm not sure that it was, clearly, the Capital Budget Committee voted unanimously not to approve, not to recommend Article 15, and I believe the Warrant Committee also voted unanimously. I'm not sure the Selectmen voted unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Springett. Sir, name and address, please.
Chris Boland, Tower Drive, Chairman of the Park and Rec Commission. I'm also on the CMAC Committee. Zero, four million, eight million, 12 million, 16 million. What is the right number to spend on the Carroll building? The reason that the Park and Rec Commission did not vote in favor of Article 15 is because we don't know the answer to that question. Two things. As mentioned in earlier during the Article 11 discussion, the idea of having some kind of town referendum or ballot question on what would make sense. We think that would be a good idea. Second thing is, nobody from the Selectmen or the Carroll Management Committee, of which I am a member, has come to Park and Rec and asked us what our needs are. We've been asked what we use, but we occupy 40,000 square feet in various parts, but that's not what our needs are. I'm not sure the Council on Aging has been asked what their needs are. One of the things I would suggest, and we, the Park and Rec Commission, would love to see come out of this, is the Selectmen to commission a study, as well as a vote, a study as to what the needs are for a community center. And we think that's the right place to start. It was suggested at the Warrant Open Hearing Meeting by, I think it was Mr. Springett, that we could do that over the next year. We think that makes a lot of sense, and we would like to suggest that that be considered by the Selectmen, either at this meeting, if that's possible, or following this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Yes. Hold it, Justine. Did you go to the microphone, or we can bring one down for you?
Very short. I'd like to move the question.
Justine, state your name and address for the record, please.
Justine Tanger, Tam Haven Street.
Okay. Motion has been made to move the question. That is, do I hear a second? Motion has been seconded. It's a non-debatable motion. All those who are in favor of moving the question, you'll press 1 for yes. If you're opposed, press 2 for no, and you may vote now. Okay, very good. The motion to move the question carries. We will now move directly to the vote. I would like to remind everybody that this is a two-thirds vote. So because of the borrowing that would be involved. If you are in favor of this motion to construct the renovation, you'll press 1 for yes. If you're opposed, you'll press 2 for no, and you may vote now. Article 16, Conservation Commission.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, hold it. Robin, yes?
I would like to, oh, that was awfully loud. I would propose to reconsider Article 15, not to revote it, but to reconsider it. The purpose for this reconsideration is if we leave town meeting this evening without a decision, it will be another 12 months with no path forward. So I would like to recommend a town meeting to set aside some funds so that we can put together a use plan for Carroll, along with a needs assessment, which will give us a path to move forward and give the voters of Dover a choice of what potentially a full renovation of the Carroll Community Center, based upon programming uses, would cost. And I would recommend an amount of $200,000.
Okay, there's been a motion for reconsideration. If that motion is made within half hours of the vote on the main motion, it's a majority vote. So if a majority votes in favor, we will revisit Article 15 and then consider the new proposal that Ms. Hunter is recommending. If you vote no, then we will not reconsider. This is not debatable traditionally in Dover, so we would move directly to the vote on reconsideration. Again, if you vote yes, press 1. That will allow us to revisit the motion. If you vote no, the motion will not carry, and we will not reconsider the motion. You may vote now. Okay, the motion for reconsideration has passed, so we will move back to Article 15. And Ms. Hunter, since you suggested that you wanted to make a new motion, let me turn it back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move to amend in its entirety the motion under warrant Article 15 and replace it with the following. I move that the town transfer from free cash the amount of $200,000 for the purpose of developing schematic designs and cost estimates for improvements to the facility of the Carroll Community Center.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunter. Do I hear a second for the motion to amend?
Second.
All right, the motion has been made and has been amended. Now, we're actually going to have two votes, possibly. The first vote will be to approve the motion to amend, and if that passes, then we will move to consider the motion as it is amended. So first vote will be a majority vote on whether you approve of consideration of this motion to amend that Ms. Hunter has made. If you're in favor of her motion to amend, you'll press 1 for yes. If you're opposed, you'll press 2 for no, and vote on my cue. Okay, the motion to amend has carried, so now we will have a discussion of the motion as it has been amended by Ms. Hunter's proposed amendment. And Ms. Hunter, could you read that again? Could we put it up on the screen again so that people can see it and we'll be able to discuss it?
So, Mr. Clark, so my amendment is to transfer from free cash the amount of $200,000 for the purpose of developing schematic designs and cost estim, and other cost estimates for improvements to the facility at the Carroll Community Center.
Okay, so this is now the restated motion that you will be asked to consider. Is there any discussion, any questions or comments on this as restated? Mr. Fleming?
The Selectmen this evening proposed Article 15. We were led to believe that they did a study. This was a sound proposal. Now, they're proposing a study. We thought the study was done. Two, where did the $200,000 number? You know, I have a principle. Spend your neighbor's money more carefully than you spend yours. This is ridiculous. Where did the $200,000 come? We just picked that out of the sky? And what did you spend on the study when you proposed 15 just a little while ago?
Is that your question, Mr. Fleming?
That's, yes, it's a comment and a question.
All right, thank you. Ms. Hunter, would you like to respond to that?
Yes. Mr. Fleming, I appreciate your comments. The studies were done 15 years ago. Attending the open hearings, there seemed to be an appetite in this town for the citizens to understand what the cost would be for a fully renovated Carroll facility that would be a space that meets the programming needs of this community. As such, I contacted some architectural firms to ask them what the cost would be for schematic designs, which would include capital needs assessments, along with energy assessments, along with the cost for a complete renovation of Carroll and to provide schematic designs. I felt it was important for this town to be able to see what they might get that would meet their needs, and an estimate I got was $200,000. And as such, I am making this proposal.
Well, I, on television, watched that hearing. There were a handful of people at that hearing. It was not a large meeting. And secondly, you're telling us, Selectmen are telling us, that they made a recommendation on a proposal that was 15 years old. That doesn't make sense. You were operating with that study and a handful of people in a hearing last week, which does not represent Dover. I can't accept that.
I appreciate your comments.
This should be rejected, and you should go back and build a plan and bring back to us a thoughtful plan.
Mr. Fleming, in order to bring a plan to town meeting, we need resources to do so.
$200,000?
And since municipal accounting, only you have to appropriate the funds. We have no choice other than to request the funds this evening or to wait another 12 months to get the funds. The purpose of this reconsideration is to attempt to move forward, to get some resolution on an issue that has divided this town for 15 years.
Then do it with $25,000 to $50,000.
It's not possible.
Okay. Any more questions or comments? Yes, Ms. Weld. Mrs. Weld?
I just, I feel I need to comment that the previous recommendation was not made totally on the 2003 study. It has been updated in several studies since then, in 2014, and most recently, again, in 2016 and 2017, as we were preparing this proposal. So everything has been updated, reviewed by the mechanical, structural, whatever other kind of engineers that are supposed to do all these things. So that would be incorrect in saying that we have not done anything, any assessments since 2003.
Thank you, Mrs. Weld. Mr. Crowley?
Is it appropriate to move the question?
Yes, it is, Mr. Crowley. Motion has been made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, motion has been made to move the question. It has been seconded. If you're in favor of moving the question, please press 1 for yes. If you're opposed, please press 2 for no, and you may vote now. We will now move to vote on the motion that Mrs. Hunter made with respect to the amendment. Town Council has advised that this is a two-thirds vote, as was the main motion.
It's free cash.
Free cash? Okay, so it's okay. No borrowing?
No borrowing.
Okay, okay, very good. All right, thank you. It is a majority vote to adopt or to reject Ms. Hunter's motion. And if you are in favor of the motion, you'll press 1 for yes and press 2 for no, and you may vote now. Okay, the motion passes, 119 to 84. Article 16, Conservation Commission.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir.
I move that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $25,000 for the Conservation Fund to be used by the Conservation Commission for any purpose authorized by Chapter 40, Section 8(c) of the Massachusetts General Laws.
Thank you, Mr. Hamley. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Cohen has seconded. Is there any discussion on this motion? I don't see any. Okay, yes, sir. Can we bring a microphone down?
John Sullivan, 35 Walpole Street, Chair of the Conservation Commission. For a number of years, we've been requesting this money. It's not much when you want to buy a piece of land in Dover, but it's been very helpful to leverage with Dover Land Conservation Trust, trustees of the reservations, and other like-minded groups, and has allowed us to conserve a number of acres over the last 10 years. So it's very short money to maintain the values that the master plan has set out a number of years ago where it shows very clearly how much people in town value the open space that we have and to maintain that. So I would ask that you go ahead and vote in favor of this. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Any other questions or comments? Okay, I don't see any hands up, so let's, anybody? Okay, so let's move to a vote on Article 16. If you're in favor of the motion, press 1 for yes. If you're opposed, press 2 for no. You may vote now. Motion carries. Article 17, Open Space.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town votes, raise, and appropriate the sum of $10,000 to revise the open space recreation plan of 2011.
Thank you, Mr. Kinder. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Candy. Any discussion on Article 17? Yes, sir, Mr. Clark. Name and address for the record, please.
Request that the Open Space Committee consider the opportunity to submit the results of the updating of the space plan to be inserted into the town's GIS map.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clark. Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, let's move to a vote on this motion for Article 17. This is a majority vote. If you're in favor, press 1 for yes. If you're opposed, press 2 for no. You may vote now. Motion carries. Article 18, Supplemental Vote. Mr. Stewart.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town supplement each prior vote of the town that authorizes the borrowing money of money to pay costs of capital projects to provide that in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the Massachusetts General Laws. The premium received by the town upon sale of any bonds or notes thereunder, lest any premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to pay project costs, and the amount authorized to be borrowed for each such project shall be reduced by the amount of any such premium so applied. And two, appropriate $192,000 from the premium paid to the town upon the sale of the bonds dated December 21, 2017, to pay a portion of the costs of acquiring real property known as 46 Springdale Avenue authorized by vote of the September 15, 2014, Article 1, and to reduce the amount authorized to be borrowed for such project but not yet issued by the town by the same amount.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Baskin. Any discussion on the motion for Article 18? Yes, ma'am. Can we bring a microphone down?
Hi, Candace Sullivan, 100 Pine Street. I know I'm not the only one that doesn't understand this article. Could you please go through it in a way that's more elementary-based?
Would be happy to. Mr. Ramsey is prepared to answer that question. Mr. Ramsey?
When the town borrows money, typically bidders offer a premium to effectively lower the interest rate from what is on the principal, on the coupons for the bonds. In the past, the premium was applied to the interest payments on the debt service. The law changed about two years ago, making it possible now to reduce the amount borrowed by the amount of the premium. So it's a change in law that makes it possible to do this.
Okay, thank you. Does that answer? Okay, okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Is there, is there another question, follow-up question, or? Where, I'm sorry? Oh, Bonnie, Mrs. Akins?
The $250,000 housing has never been issued. So where does that money go?
Mr. Ramsey?
You're right, it has not been issued, Mrs. Akins, so it doesn't apply in this case.
Well, then why is it in here?
To cover all previous borrowings and authorizations.
And authorization?
Yes.
So will the $250 just disappear as an obligation?
It is on the books currently. It has not been rescinded, but there are no plans to issue debt under that authorization.
Right, so it'll just disappear from a town report?
Well, it'll stay on the books until it's rescinded.
By?
The town meeting.
So that'll be another thing?
Perhaps someday. That predates me, I believe.
Now, when will we, when do we get to rescind it? I mean, why, I, I'm confused about why it's even in here.
To be comprehensive, so this would apply to all previous debt issued and authorized.
Right, so...
I can't answer the question about why that borrowing authorization has not yet been rescinded.
No, I'm not worried about that part. Why does this particular thing about premiums apply to it? It is, I don't, I don't get it. I don't, I, I don't understand. I understand why everybody's confused.
This motion was crafted to apply to all previously issued or authorized debt, to be comprehensive, and also to apply to the Springdale debt as well.
All right, all right, I'll take your word for it.
Okay, any other questions or discussion? Okay, I'm not seeing any. Let's move to a vote. All in favor of the motion? If you're in favor, press 1 for yes. If you're opposed, press 2 for no. You may vote now. Okay, motion carries. Article 19, Dover Sherburne Regional Schools. Mr. Rossetti?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town appropriate the sum of $288,711 by transfer from free cash to be expended by the Dover Sherburne Regional School Committee pursuant to an intergovernmental agreement entered into by the town of Dover on February 22, 2018 with, with the Dover Sherburne Regional School District and the town of Sherburne for the purpose of paying Dover's allocated cost of the following capital equipment and improvements. Asphalt paving, $170,000. Fire detection field sensors, $50,000. Tractor, $45,000. Flash storage, $45,000. Floors, Lindquist Cafeteria, $60,000. Courtyard roof, $35,000. Locker room floor, $25,000. Walk-in freezer and refrigeration, $25,000. Concrete replacement, $20,000. AC computer labs, sped office, $20,000. Exhaust ventilation, $15,000. Total, $510,000, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto.
Thank you, Mr. Rossetti. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Alders. Okay, any discussion on this motion for the Dover Sherburne Regional Schools? Okay, seeing no hands up and nobody coming down, let's move to a vote on this motion. If you're in favor of the motion, please press, press 1 for yes or 2 for no. You may vote now. Okay, the motion carries. Next, Article 20, Dover Sherburne Regional School Borrowing. Mrs. Alders?
Mr. Moderator, I move that this article be dismissed.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Rossetti has seconded. Any discussion on this motion to dismiss Article 20? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to a vote. If you're in favor of dismissal, press 1 for yes or 2 for no. You may vote now. Motion carries. Article 21, Planning Board. Mrs. Baskin?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town amend Section 185-46 of the zoning bylaw personal wireless service facilities, as shown in the complete text of which is on file in the offices of the town clerk and the planning board, and further that the nonsubstantive changes in the numbering of this bylaw be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the Dover Town Code.
Thank you, Mrs. Baskin. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Mr. Sarrow, will you make the report of the planning board?
Thank you. Thanks, Mark Sarrow, Colonial Road and Planning Board Chair. We do have slides, but given the nature of this and the time, we'll just forego those. And I'll just make a quick comment to summarize this article for you. Each year, the planning board brings updates of zoning bylaws to town meeting. A couple of years ago, it was site plan review. Last year, it was the sign bylaw. This year, it's the wireless communications bylaw. And we bring this update at this time for a couple of very good reasons. First off, the current bylaw was accepted by town meeting in 1997, so it's fully more than 20 years old, and it hasn't changed at all in that period of time. Nothing about this article before us tonight changes anything about the way that the bylaw regulates certain types of wireless facilities, large wireless facilities that were contemplated at the time the bylaw was passed originally, which would be the large, you know, monopole cell towers, where accustomed to with antennas on them. But in the period of time since that was passed, the technology has changed dramatically, as we all know. And so the planning board doesn't see those kinds of proposals much anymore. What we see now are proposals for smaller wireless facilities. So these are things that you can imagine are smaller antennas and the related equipment that would be placed on existing structures, like a utility pole. And so the bylaw currently doesn't contemplate those kinds of facilities, and we would like it to, so that we can regulate them more specifically and differentiate them from the large wireless facilities. And so this article does a few things in the current bylaw. It defines small wireless facilities specifically, so they are differentiated. It allows them to be placed on scenic roads in town, which is basically all of our main roads where we would either experience gaps in coverage or where wireless carriers would come to the planning board looking to propose these kinds of facilities to fill those gaps. It allows, it requires limitations on these kinds of facilities that wouldn't be required on larger facilities because they wouldn't really apply. So for example, it would allow only one of these antennas to be placed on a given utility pole, where the current bylaw encourages co-location on a pole because it envisions a monopole, not a, not a telephone pole. This article would not allow any of these types of antennas to be placed on double poles, the poles that are doubled up in town, where the current bylaw doesn't say anything about that. And so that gives us the ability to try to encourage that those be replaced or that the carriers move on to other locations. It imposes a 10-foot increase, a restriction of a 10-foot increase on existing poles if antennas are placed on existing poles, where the current bylaw has a limitation on that increase of 20 feet. So this reduces that by 50%. And we impose an overall height limit on a new pole, which the current bylaw doesn't do because, again, it doesn't contemplate utility poles being used in this way. It also requires a manual reporting to the town on maintenance activities and costs that aren't required in the current bylaw. And it requires that any of these smaller wireless facilities go through the site plan review process that I mentioned town meeting approved two years ago. And that gives the town a chance to understand these proposals and to be sure that they meet the requirements of the bylaw for things like location, noise, height, setbacks, and other design features. Notably, by the way, that site plan review process is a public process. It requires a public hearing and lots of discussion, which is really the point, which is to, to have a discussion with the carriers rather than just to have them come in and assume or assert that they can do these kinds of things as of right in the town. We'd really rather have this discussion and a bylaw that's tailored to deal with these types of facilities. This article also simplifies the current bylaw by moving details of the application process over to the planning board's regulations. It's four pages of all of the requirements of what has to be in one of these applications. And by moving it to regulations, it allows us to adopt those through a public hearing process that doesn't require a town meeting vote like this to take up time for those kinds of application details. All of these updates have been pretty, pretty fully vetted over the past year. We've had several planning board meetings about them. We've had a public hearing. We attended the Warren Committee opening hearing in March, and we met with the Warren Committee at some of its regular meetings. It's also been vetted by our Wireless Town Council, and all of whom agree that this is a good idea, overdue, and will benefit the town. The complete redline version of the article has been on the website and is still there for anyone who's interested to see all of the redlines and hasn't seen them yet. And so with that, I will stop and just see if anyone has questions and glad to answer them if so. If not, thanks for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Sarrow. Any questions or comments? Okay, we'll move to a vote on this. This is a two-thirds vote because it's a zoning bylaw. So if you're in favor of the motion to amend the zoning bylaw, press 1 for yes. If you're opposed, press 2 for no, and you may vote now. Okay, motion carries. Next, Article 22. Yes?
Let me just explain so people understand. As Ms. Hunter proposed the amendment...
Mr. Fallon, please say your name.
Andy Fallon, Hartford Street in Dover. As the amendment to Article 15 was presented, I believe we're within a half hour, as the article was amended, it provided for a $200,000 amount in order to study and do, to do the re-schematics, if you'd like to put that up, I'd appreciate it, if, to do a schematic of the Carroll School. It did not give the option of a determination not to, that it was not worth putting the money into that school. So I would like to move to reconsider that vote so that the people voting here can consider that. And speaking with a few people, they didn't understand that it did not include the option not to have a schematic for the full renovation of the Carroll School. That's a fait accompli, the way that amendment was, or that article was written.
Uh, motions for reconsideration are not debatable... Motions for reconsideration are not debatable in Dover. Our tradition has been not to debate them, so we'll move right to a vote. Since this motion was made within a half hour of, let me just confirm now with Town Clerk, yes, it was made within a half hour. Therefore, under the Dover bylaw, this is a majority vote. If a majority vote in favor of reconsideration, then we would go back to reconsider Article 15 as it was amended. If a majority vote no, then we will not reconsider the article. Are we ready for our vote? I'll give you the sign in a second. Okay, you may vote now. One, yes. Two, no. Okay, motion for reconsideration does not pass. Article 22, Marijuana. We're burning up up here. Mr. Rossetti.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the Town amend the general bylaws of the Town of Dover by inserting Chapter 113 entitled Marijuana Establishments in quotes for the purposes of banning marijuana establishments in the Town of Dover, as shown in the document on file in the office of the Town Clerk and as follows. Heading in Chapter 113, Marijuana Establishments. Section 113-1, Marijuana Establishments Prohibited. The operation of any marijuana establishment as defined in Chapter 94G, Section 1 of the Massachusetts General Laws, including without limitation, a marijuana cultivator, marijuana testing facility, marijuana product manufacturer, marijuana retailer, or any other type of licensed marijuana-related business within the Town is prohibited.
Thank you, Mr. Rossetti. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Kinder. Motion has been made and seconded to prohibit marijuana facilities and production. Is there, are there any questions or discussion? Chief McKenna, did you want to make a statement, brief statement?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Chief Peter McGowan for the Town of Dover Police Department. This article is a continuation of the process begun in November 2016 when the state voted to legalize marijuana. Dover voted no with approximately 59% of the vote. A yes vote tonight would prevent a retail shop, processing plant, commercial grow, or other manufacturing and distribution point from opening in Town. At least 189 of the 351 cities and towns in the Commonwealth have currently banned recreational marijuana locations, banned or had a moratorium against it. Some of the reasons given for bans in other locations include incompatibility with the character of the town, addiction for profit during a national addiction and overdose epidemic, increased community costs of enforcement, regulation, and hospitalization, and some revenue is just not worth the taking. Neighboring towns with bans in place would be Wellesley, Sherburne, Westwood, Medfield, and Dedham. Needham is voting on their ban this week, and Natick has a moratorium through December 2018, and they're looking at policies to deal with issues that come with these businesses when they come to Town. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief McGowan. Any other questions or comments? Okay, this is a majority vote. We'll move directly to a vote. If you're in favor of the prohibition, place one for yes. If you're opposed, press two for no. You may vote now. Okay, motion passes. Article 23, Reserve Fund. Mr. Cohn?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the Town appropriate the sum of $250,000 for a reserve fund for fiscal year 2019 to provide for extraordinary or unforeseen expenditures pursuant to Chapter 40, Section 6 of the Massachusetts General Laws, and that to meet this appropriation, $150,000 be raised and $100,000 be transferred from the overlay surplus.
Thank you, Mr. Cohn. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Gurnon. Is there any discussion on this motion? Okay, I don't see anybody. Yes, sir. Could we bring your microphone down?
Mitchell Bourbon, 70 Wilson Dale Street. Just for clarification, says the Warrant Committee recommends the sum of $250,000 be raised. Is that the same thing as what you're suggesting? I thought you said 150 be raised and 100 for something else, but I wasn't sure if that's the same thing as you're recommending. Did I get it right?
Yes, I apologize if that's a little confusing, but what they're doing is, and somebody can correct me if I get this wrong, but the Assessors' Office is releasing some of the funds that have been held back. It's just, it's just a funding mechanism that we need to approve. But the amount of 250,000 is the same amount of, that's the same amount that we've approved for the Reserve Fund for many years now for the annual Reserve Fund. I'm not sure that... Yes, yes.
Okay. Any other questions or comments before we move to a vote? Okay, this is a majority vote. If you are in favor of the motion, press one for yes. If you're opposed, press two, and you may vote now. Motion passes. Article 24, Unpaid Bills for Prior Fiscal Year. Mrs. Gurnon?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the sum of $8,634 be transferred from free cash for the purpose of paying Global Montello Group Corporation $5,347, Southworth Milton Incorporated $1,887, and Dixon Smith Reimbursement $1,400.
Thank you, Mrs. Gurnon. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hamerly. Now, this is a four-fifths vote because it's an expenditure that relates back to a prior year. Are there any questions or comments on this motion before we vote on it? Okay, I don't see anybody. Okay, let's move to a vote again. It's a four-fifths vote. If you're in favor of the motion, press one for yes. If you're opposed, press two for Motion carries. Article 25, Supplemental Appropriations. Mr. Hamerly?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the Town make a supplemental appropriation in the sum of $102,500 to be used in conjunction with money appropriated under Article 4 of the warrant for the 2017 Annual Town Meeting, to be expended during the current fiscal year by transfer from free cash in the Treasury in line item 5200-0504-2000, brackets, Professional Services of Budget 122, Selectmen.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Cohn, for seconding. Any discussion on this motion? Okay, this is a majority vote. If you're in favor of the motion, press one for yes. Two for no. You may vote now. Okay, motion carries. Article 26, Free Cash. Mr. Kinder?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the Town transfer from free cash, sum of $909,227.
Okay, $909,000?
Yes.
$227.
To meet the appropriations for fiscal year 2019, can the Board of Assessors be authorized to use the same amount to reduce the tax rate for fiscal year 2019?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kinder. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Ms. Kenny has seconded. Mr. Jeffries, you had asked to be recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We, the Selectmen, have met extensively with warrant, and we are, based upon the numbers, we would be on the same page with regards to the amount of appropriations that needed to be spent this evening with the amount of appropriations that warrant feels is both prudent and advisory to segment with regards to the amount that will be used to reduce next year's levy. So, Ms. Kenny, is there anything else that we should add to this, or is there anything else that needs to be done to this? This number does not need to be segmented any further. This is the total amount.
This is the total amount.
Ms. Kenny said that is the total amount.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Mrs. Akins?
I believe if my calculations are correct, that we approved, I'm Bonnie Akins, Greystone Road. We approved $102,500 from free cash. We approved $8,634. We approved $200,000 for Carroll. We approved $288,711 for the region. And now we're asking for $909,227. Am I correct? Did I leave anything out?
I think that's correct. The motion for the $200,000 for Carroll...
No, I realize that, but this is, but I'm coming up with the total amount from free cash, which at the moment is just under $8 million, which is about a little more than 20% of our total expenditures for a year before any state funds, any anything. So this amount of money is less than $2 million, and I submit it is not enough. It is, I was the only non-government official at a meeting yesterday for two and a half hours while the Board of Selectmen and the Warrant Committee talked about this issue, and they did come to an agreement. But it's not enough, because I can promise you, as some members of the Warrant Committee pointed out yesterday, at this June 30th, we will probably have over $10 million in free cash. And that is just too much money. In addition, we have $1 million almost in the stabilization fund. We have significant insurance on our buildings. We fully fund the budgets that we have. We get turnbacks every year. We fully fund the schools for the circuit breaker, which is a special education reimbursement that comes back to the Town. We never know the exact amount for a while. But, you know, the argument's going to come from the Board of Selectmen. Oh, but we have all of this OPEB, unprepared for post-retirement benefits. The Towns portion, we started with $1 million with a settlement for a oil spill, and we have been contributing to it every year. It is now about 60% fully funded. We have contributed, according to the consultant's formula, four years ago it was $180,000, three years ago it was $180,000, last year and this coming year it's up to, up to, it's down to $140. The region has chosen to do nothing. We're going to have a big expenditure when we get there, but we're not going to save it every day for a rainy day because it's too easy to spend the money for something else. So help with the tax rate now a little bit more, a little, everybody has, well, you know, $3 million didn't do very much to the tax rate last year. Well, it did do a little to the tax rate last year. And I am just not happy with having this. I am fully in favor of a healthy, healthy cash, free cash balance, but overweight free cash balance, I am not happy about. So I would like to see this $909,000, which came down over $100,000 while they were chatting away up there, to a million, a million five. And that's how I would like to amend the motion, Mr. Moderator, and I'll give you a piece of paper.
Okay, if you could put that in writing, please, Bonnie, and after it's in writing, please read it again. Okay, Bonnie, could you read your motion again, and then I'll come?
I move that $1.5 million be used by the Assessors to reduce the tax rate for fiscal year 2019. Does anybody out there want to second me? Jim, you do a great job. Whoops, my lectern here riddles, though.
So we have a motion that's been made to amend and seconded. We will have discussion on that motion to amend, and then we'll move to a vote on the motion. Mr. Cohn and Mr. Jeffries both asked to be recognized. Mr. Cohn first?
I, John Cohn, I'm on the Warrant Committee, and just, just so that, this is, this can be very confusing to those of us who have been involved in a day-to-day for months, but just so to sort of give one or two data points, that the amount that the Warrant Committee recommended before the amendment was proposed includes $800,000 above what was needed to fill the gap between revenues and expenditures. So we have a certain amount that we put in to fill the gap. Eric, I've made the presentation at the very beginning of tonight, which seems like weeks ago for some of, and then, and then we added 800. Last year, just to, just to sort of complete the picture, the Warrant Committee recommended an amount that included an additional $1.3 million to, to reduce the tax rate, which effectively, whatever your bill might have been otherwise, your, your, your tax bill was 4% lower. So I just wanted to give some context to what, what we've, what we did last year and this year.
Thank you, Mr. Cohn. Mr. Jeffries?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We, and thank you, Mr. Cohn. Ladies and gentlemen, the Selectmen and warrant have spent an incredible amount of time. The Warrant Committee diligently looks at these numbers. We have to be prepared for every contingency at this evening's meeting. We have to be prepared for the contingencies that Mrs. Hunter will talk about briefly. We appreciate that it seems like a lot of money. It seems like we are, we have an enviable free cash. And as warrant and the members of the Warrant Committee, and especially Mr. Cohn, Mr. Stewart, and the people who've served on this committee for a very long time, have reminded us continuously, this didn't happen overnight. This free cash position has been an accumulation of prudent stewardship of your money for a long period of time. We do have very large expenditures coming. We feel, the Selectmen feel unanimously, that the number that warrant proposed to us is the right number. It's very easy to pick a number that's a little bit more than we're proposing to give you back. How would anyone argue with giving you a little bit back of your own money? Our job is to be prudent. Our job is to be fiscally responsible with your money. Our job is to look at all of the options, all of the contingencies, and all of the future contingent liabilities, money that we owe. We agree with warrant. We agree with their due diligence. We agree with their proposal. And one last item for Mrs. Hunter.
Thank you, Mr. Jeffries. Is there any further discussion on this motion? None. Okay, we will move to a vote on the motion. It's a majority vote. If you're in favor of Mrs. Akins' motion, you'll press one for yes. If you're opposed to Mrs. Akins' motion, you'll press two for no. You may vote now. You may vote now. Okay, we will, we will now go back to the main motion, which was the request that the town transfer from free cash $909,227. So is there any further discussion on the main motion? Seeing none, let's move to a vote. And I mean, I give you the cue. If you're in favor of the main motion, you'll press 1 for yes. You'll press 2 for no. And just wait a second while Rebecca gets this set up. You may vote now. Article 27, Stabilization Fund. Mr. Stewart.
Mr. Moderator, I move that this article be dismissed.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been made to dismiss Article 27. Any discussion on this article? Okay, we'll move to a vote. If you're in favor of dismissal, press 1 for yes. If you're opposed, press 2 for no. You may vote now. We will now move to the final motion. Mrs. Kenny.
Mr. Moderator, I move that this meeting be dissolved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Before I ask for the vote, any discussion? Okay, are we ready for a vote, Rebecca? If you're in favor, press 1 for yes. If you're opposed, press 2 for no on my cue. And by the way, while she's setting it up, please do not forget to return the clicker on your way out, so that the town doesn't have to pay for these. Thank you. You may vote now. Thank you very much. Have a good night. Safe journey home.